Okay.
Are you ready Rebecca?
Yes, thank you, sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no, no problem. We will. The May 19th Planning Board hearing, Planning Board meeting will come to order at 7:05. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye Brad.
We'll call, yeah. Wally, Jim, Brad, me. Okay, Tom Planner. With update with the remote meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This open meeting of the Groveland Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. Through the current emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's orders suspended the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Groveland Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating participating by video conference. All supporting materials are available on the town's website.
Okay, um, first thing on the agenda is Kentucky Regional School District. I gotta recuse myself because I am an employee. Well, if you take it all for me.
Yeah, so on the, so Rebecca, can you read in what we're doing with the Kentucky? Are we accepting?
I'm confused, accepting?
I'm just reading into the, trying to read into the record what we're doing with Kentucky here.
As noted on the agenda, it is a request for a minor site plan approval pursuant to Section 13 of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing middle school building and construct a new multipurpose artificial turf athletic field with ADA compliant features for approximately 800 spectators. Infrastructure for future field lights and a two-story 6,847 square foot stadium support building. At a meeting back in the fall, the Planning Board had agreed to move forward with a minor site plan and did not require the applicant to file a legal notice and/or send notice to a butters due to the fact that Wes Newberry was reviewing the project in its entirety.
Okay, and they're before us this evening for the approval for the building permit or for the, for the application itself or the?
For the application itself as a minor site plan.
Okay, and who did, Pete, have you reviewed any of that?
No, I wasn't involved in that one.
Okay.
I think that was Wes Newberry throwing to us while, if I remember correctly.
They have.
Everything reviewed by Wes Newberry and the Planning Board also.
Alright, so that goes back to where we started then on that. So, um, is anyone representing the school here?
Maria?
I am here, yes, is Brad on the list?
Uh, is Brad there? I don't see Brad.
Okay, I'm here.
Yeah, Brad, oh, Steve, Steve Trains here too, so he's our.
I'm here, I'm the owner's project manager with Vertex.
Okay, so which one are you going to be representing? Just throw the pitch to the board.
I guess Brad typically does that, Brad on the, in the meeting here.
I don't see Brad signed in.
Okay, so well, we can proceed, Steve or I can do it.
Okay, go ahead.
What, what would you like us to do? I'm sorry.
Just a, just an overall briefing to bring us up. I mean Rebecca did a nice job, she just read into the record what you're trying to do. So you're presenting the application for the minor change. And can you just give a, a quick overall, is anything different than what Rebecca read?
Nothing is different than what Rebecca and Brett that we submitted. The Wes Newberry Planning Board reviewed everything. They had Meridian review the documents. Meridian did request a few revisions which were reflected on the last version of the documents that were also copied to Rebecca. And since then, we now can't come and Wes Newberry just gave us the order of conditions. And we are right now in the 10-day appeal period, just waiting for it to be over. The OOC was given to us on the 14th, so on the 20, on the, yeah, the 24th, we should be able to go ahead. We don't anticipate any issues. In the meantime, we are going, just, you know, talking, working things out with, with Conservation. And then we are, we are going to follow after that, once Conservation and Wes Newberry process is over, we're going to follow that with Problem Conservation Commission.
Okay, so this is a courtesy review of Wes Newberry that handed off over to us, is that what I'm just assessing here?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, alright, so, um, so board members, do you have any? Based upon what we've heard and know, and if Wes, Wes Newberry is doing the overall, we're just courtesies on this. Any questions for the applicant from the board members?
No, because I think if you were, I think if you remember originally, Lisa and I, when they read it off, it's only a small portion of the stadium that falls into Groveland, am I right?
That is correct, the stadium, both field and the support building, which only has lockers and concession and a press box above, are half in Wes Newberry and half in Groveland. And then there's some supporting parking spaces, but the majority of the parking spaces are in the Wes Newberry side as well.
And if I understand correctly, you still have a little bit of, you gotta go through our concom as well, correct?
Yes, we will, but the boundaries really have remained pretty much the same. Where the existing driveway that connects the Wes Newberry and the Groveland side are, is remaining for the most part. The entry points from the street of 113 are remaining, we're just modifying the boundaries a little bit, but the entry points are the same.
Yeah, Wally, I'm, I'm okay with it, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, Jim.
I think it'd be great for the neighborly atmosphere to show unity through all communities. I have no problems with it at all.
No, neither do I, how about you, Wally?
Now, I just wanted to just get on the record if there was any questions or input. I understand what they're doing because it's a multi-town, obviously, school and project. And then we're, we're just coming in on a little bit aside, right next to Meramec River Drive actually. And, uh, in the Valley Farm subdivision, when that was put in decades ago, this, this actually came up. Because they had just put in the walkway and some other stuff over there, so I've seen this before. So if, if no one has a, any other issues, we can go ahead, someone fly the motion for the, for the minor mod.
Go ahead Brad.
I'll fly the motion for the minor mod.
Okay, all in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, show the vote unanimous, show the minor, minor change approved.
Good luck guys.
So, um, did all of you get a chance to review the drafted decision that was sent to you in terms of what was issued for conditions per what Wes Newberry had, had requested? And then also what our decision would be recorded along with that, recognizing that we had discussed it at this meeting and we had taken out a vote to approve the minor site plan?
I, I skipped through it.
Same, I didn't see any major things that jumped out at me.
Correct.
So then could I also have a motion to accept the decision as drafted?
A motion to accept the decision that drafted.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous.
Thank you.
How do you want to endorse that Rebecca?
Um, I will get everything finalized and I think that we can discuss that actually with the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Alright guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
See you later, Maria and Steve, see you tomorrow. Thursday, I guess.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and propose vote Oakland Terrace 733 Salem Street, DeHulu Homes. Vote for endorsement of approved 37 Wood Street informal discussion for a Form A filing in Conservation subdivision design.
Mister, on the first item, it's the endorsement of Oakland Terrace 733 Salem Street.
Yep.
Um, if I may let the board know that the applicant has submitted the Form F, the Form H, the development schedule and has made amendments to the plan to reflect the Water and Sewer Commission and specifically their desire to see the water connection and the loop coming out over by Washington Street. Um, so they have submitted all of the information that we have requested. They have also sent over that information to TEC and TEC has provided a monitoring agreement form for them to take a look at in terms of what we would require for stormwater management and also for the subdivision requirements for milestone review, et cetera. So they have complied, so I think it's a matter of making a formal vote as to whether or not the board would like to endorse the plan. And then it's a logistics issue as to how we go about that, which ties into the other decision as well.
Okay, well, I gotta recede, so you'll have to take it.
Okay. Um, Pete, can you give us a brief on, on what you found on that?
Um, well, that review's pretty old, so all I've worked on recently was just putting together the monitoring agreement, which was, you know, six stages from the subdivision regs, you know, rough grading prior to road control, subgrade of the road, stuff like that. And then after the rain events. But I haven't looked at the actual project, the details of the project in probably five, six months, I would say.
Okay, um, the water main loop, what, what size name was that? Somebody know, eight?
I believe it was an eight.
Eight inch main, okay. Hydrants.
Excuse me, is this the property from Wood Street where he was donating water land to the town? And it was expired a year later, is that the same project? I think it's something different.
Different project, this is the one that's actually located behind Benjamin Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so one, Oak Terrace coming off of, on Salem Street with a loop water system, eight inch main, that's, that sounds great. And it's whatever the water board wanted, actually. Fire hydrants, are there any listed?
Yes, the plan was updated to reflect the two hydrants as requested by the water department.
Okay, fire chief sign off.
Uh, this one was reviewed by the interim chief, not the current fire chief. And they, in fact, when they did review it, signed off during the permitting phase.
Okay, okay, alright, just as long as everybody knows, is it gonna be a hydrant also on Washington where this pops out?
Yes, one at the T and one at the Washington.
Oh, okay, alright, so just two, huh? Going through, okay. Board members, any, any concerns or inputs on this?
No.
I think if the fire department checked, uh, wrote, checked off on it and agreed to the requirements, I mean, it's pretty good for us.
Yeah, okay, and where are we with, um, conservation and this project getting that, that parcel the town was gonna purchase?
I'm not sure where that stands, but I believe Dina and Steve DeHulu with DeHulu Homes was on the call. Maybe Dina, Steve, you might be able to speak to that, please?
Yeah, we will talk to Mike at some point, he's waiting, he realizes that we needed to get all of this complete before we furthered our discussions regarding the remaining land.
Okay, so just so you can update the board, when we last left our heroes, and correct me on numbers, but it was approximately four or five acres that was gonna be attached over to VZ Park, is that correct?
No, we never agreed with any, we never had any formal discussions with Conservation about what exactly was gonna be done with that property. We have talked to Mike here and there, but he realizes that he wanted, we were gonna wait till we got this whole project done and approved before we moved any further with that. It really wasn't part of this whole subdivision.
So what's, what's the intent? So, and actually it is, just to correct the record on that, uh, it was, the, the waiving of the annexing offs, off Washington Street uh, was because there was an agreement that benefited the town on whatever that acreage is, I'm not sure. And I knew it was gonna move around a little bit as far as the lot lines exactly, but, but also the town in the planning board supported that article for funding for that parcel, so it is part of this project. And it's, it's not a separate deal, it's, it's, it's part of it. So how would you wish to proceed with that? Because I thought that was already done, actually.
Yeah, I know, it's, I, I know you've continuously said that it was part of it, but actually, the reason for the waivers and so forth was the fact that we didn't do the other, the fourth lot over there. And the land and where the Conservation is going to be able to purchase that land. Mike has told me he was in no rush to discuss that and he will be happy to discuss it with us further. That's the last time I talked to Mike about it.
Alright, so, um, it is part of it, yeah. Is that, that was some of the waivers, so, and I've said that because that's what we, we put that through. But the biggest proof of that is the, the actual warrant article that was passed that the Planning Board sponsored with the town.
Conservation.
For that, for that, yes, thank you, for that parcel of, of land and the funding for it. So that's, that was passed at a town meeting, so that should have exchanged hands or at least a letter agreement should have been inked by now with everybody on it. And it, I don't, I don't think we can just kind of put that aside, it is part of this subdivision. I, I am fully aware that, uh, that the final exact pinpoint of the parcel, because we did talk about that, that depending on the construction of the lot, you know, the line may move a little bit. And we did give some leeway on that. But funding was approved, I'm, I'm pretty sure, pretty close to a year ago on that, for that parcel. So, so how would you wish to proceed with that? Because I'd like to wrap this all up at the same time, since the town voted the money to be there for the purchase and sale. And with, without that done, we still haven't, kind of have a big piece of this subdivision just hanging out there.
Well, that was done a year ago, we were never involved, we were, it was never discussed with us. And that was something that Conservation moved forward with on their own. We've never had a formal discussion about it. And I was kind of surprised actually to see that that happened without us ever even being, you know, spoken to about it. But it did happen, and again, I really feel like Mike Dempsey should be here to confirm.
Yeah.
Because I know that you do think that it's part of the subdivision, nowhere, nowhere do I have any recollection of it being part of this. I don't believe Mike feels that way either, and in my opinion, is the only person that has said that, so I would like that clarified.
Yeah, so let's, let's get that clarified, so, um, and it was Jim Freer actually that was, that was more hand on with that one at the time. But it, it was a significant piece for waivers, it made sense, it made sense not to put in two access roads, so that, you know, and the reason why. And the other part was, the town doesn't just nilly-willy throw an article out with a, with an arbitrary parcel in the town unless there's something to it and something that's going to happen with it, we don't go that far. And the Planning Board supported that for that reason.
And I feel that Mike Dempsey should be involved in this conversation because.
Yeah, I agree.
I have nothing to do with it, so it's hard for me to talk on behalf of what Mike gave.
Alright, so, so then let's, um, let's slide this to the 19th meeting and to get Mike on board to clarify that. Because I don't want to hold you to, um, you know, I'm pretty sure what, what my memory is of that and why we did it. But let's bring Mike aboard and just get that issue. Now, you guys are free to work in between now and then to get this resolved and just a letter suffice to Mike to the board. If the board agrees to that, and if Rebecca, that sounds reasonable. But we do need to nail this thing down before we have an endorsement of a plan where we have a town warrant article to buy a parcel, which is part of this subdivision. An understanding of the board at the moment and the town as to what was gonna happen with that other parcel. And I, I think that the 19th is just two weeks, so if we can get all that wrapped up.
The motion I think is, it's the 19th. And can somebody just show me, tell me, review with me where and when this was ever part of this subdivision?
Yeah, I think.
This still, this still might be, I agree, it's, it sounds like it's a Dempsey thing. You know, and.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with signing the mylaws with subdivision.
Well, it does, because the, the parcel with the elimination of the access road was part of the subdivision approval. And then it went into negotiations with the town with somebody from your team. Because I don't think Mike would have just thrown up a warrant article, and I know there were discussions, I just don't know what they were.
He did, from my, from what I understood, or I think, for whatever that's worth, he did that in order to get the funding so that when the crime came for us to talk, negotiate with what was going to be done with that, he would have funds available.
So why don't we, okay, so, so going, if that's accurate, and, and I don't have any doubt right now, because I, I know that you, you guys were in discussion on that. And, uh, and I think with the town, we, the Planning Board at the time also facilitated some of that. So in the minutes, we'll reflect some of that, but why don't we just get this issue addressed? Is it possible that you and Mike, between now and the 19th, can get this wrapped as far as what the intent is? Uh, and what's gonna happen so we can clear the decks of this? Seems like a pretty simple thing to do.
I don't think that it should have any bearing on signing these mylaws today that were gonna be signed months ago before we had to go through the process of getting the variance on the third lot. This is all been approved, everybody had already agreed on it, and we were, it came before you to have it signed. But that's when we realized that we needed to get a variance for the third lot, which we have, which is why it has taken so long for us to come back and now ask you to please sign these so we can move forward.
Yeah, you're putting the, you're putting the horse on the wrong side of the cart.
What?
You're putting the horse on the wrong side of the cart right now. This, this subdivision and its waiver and that town warrant article for that parcel, all are in one. All related.
Is there anybody else who can comment?
In the midst.
Is there an opportunity for public comment?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how officially, um, the, the purchase of that extra part of the parcel was part of the Planning Board's process or otherwise with the Conservation Commission. But on the, at the ZBA meeting requesting waiver on access to the, to, on a different lot rather than constructing the roadway off of Washington Street. I, I believe there was a member from Conservation present on that call and they actually referenced, you know, the reason for whatever deal is gonna happen with that extra parcel either being purchased by the town or otherwise. That was in his letter and, and in his agreement in recommending the ZBA's approval of the variance request. So it's, I don't know how officially it's tied up in the deal or with the Planning Board approval process and what that means tonight, but it does seem like there's some, some bearing. And I, I think from the town's position, I think if that was part of the deal that helped move things forward, I think it sounds like from an outsider looking in, I think the town is just looking for some way to, you know, not, not lose leverage in that deal and whatever's been agreed to to date.
Mike Dempsey was at that meeting and what he confirmed was that we agreed to not build up the road in the fourth lot. And that was gonna be beneficial to the neighbors and to the whole town. That was what he was at that meeting for to confirm. My recollection, there was no discussion about the remaining land.
And, and I can tell you from my years in town and government that we don't, we don't write articles to purchase parcels nilly-willy. So there was an intent, and I know what the intent was from my perspective on the board, but let's clarify this. So let's get a motion to push this signing endorsement and get Mike on board so we can get it to the 19th and let's not delay it. But let's get clarification on this.
Remember June 6th?
Walter, today's the 19th.
Yeah, today's 19th.
Oh, I'm sorry, the next, um, when was our next meeting? I'm sorry.
The next meeting would be scheduled for June 2nd.
Okay, so I stand corrected, June 2nd.
So can I just ask, is there anybody else on this board that recalls this? Or has heard that this is something that needed to be resolved before the approval of the subdivision?
I wasn't partial to this, but listen to the conversation. You said, in order for us, in order for you to move forward, you agreed to this, this, this conversation and then to sign off on the mala, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not, I'm sure what you're asking me.
I'm trying to wrap my head around what you said earlier. You said that you signed, you, you said, we signed the mala only because you agreed to the conversation that was held for a future date that it could be changed if we needed it. Am I not getting that correct?
What are you asking Jim?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a concept about what's going on with the previous conversation, the signing of the mala and where we see it today, and what was that conversation about, the conversation, the, the, the piece of land that we're referring to? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is that part right there? Because I think that's where the rubber needs to roll that we're trying to figure out what was the agreement at the time.
So with the Planning Board, there were two, on this particular subdivision, there were two ways in.
So the reason it all happened was they were gonna sign the mylaw, because at least there's this, Walter said that.
Okay, so, um, Zoom is great, isn't it?
Not really.
So Jim, so what it was is, is that it was a subdivision with two roads in for two and two. And then, uh, in what, and initially this parcel was owned, I, I believe it was by the, by the church, the St. Patrick's Church. And what had happened was is that Mike was in tentative negotiations with the church to purchase a parcel to annex VZ Park. Because this thing, my butt's right up against that. And then the, the, the current owners came in with a subdivision plan for two entrances and a, and a very large long end and a big area wetland. And so in exchange for some waivers and a few other things and to eliminate a benefit of the town, which would be not to have two access roads coming in, Mike Dempsey entered into the picture representing conservation and open space and a parcel. And I'm, I'm trying to get the number, but I think it's around five acres, but I may not, I may not be correct on that. Entered into negotiations, and so it appeared to be a win for everybody around because the monetary value of the town, the, the current applicant would be paid for the parcel that goes through open space and conservation for VZ Park. The Planning Board seeing a benefit to the town waived the roadway and I think a few other things that went in there. Going forth, the Conservation Open Space wrote a town warrant article that this board's supporting to purchase that parcel of land. Okay, and all of this was all part of the entire subdivision approval. So what we're trying to figure out is, the warrant article was written, it did pass at town meeting, the money is there. I, I think it's around 20 grand if I remember correctly, something like that, we can pull the warrant article up to see the exact amount. So the town is ready and, and anticipating that parcel. Because we already voted it in a town meeting on this subdivision. And then the town holding up its part of the.
It froze on me.
Obviously paying for the, paying for the parcel, but also to grant all the waivers, so it's all part of the.
Well, I, I gotta, I gotta speak in and out, I, because I sat through the whole thing too. And I, I know I'm not supposed to, but they did not, and we did not make a deal with them to take, to have them take that five acres or whatever you talk, I know the posse you talk. to have them take that five acres or whatever you talk, I know the posse you're talking about.
Yeah, it's not a taking, it's a purchase.
No, or, or a purchase, they did not agree to it at all.
So how did that, well, I, I disagree, I, the only thing that I'm familiar with is that the land in there. But to clarify, all we're doing is flying a motion to put, push this thing off to June 3rd, get Dempsey in here, and let's, let's have this thing resolved once and for all, so that we can go forward. My fear is that where we already presented to the townspeople, and it was approved and funded, and the, and the planning board supported that article, for this parcel, how are we supposed to go back? Okay, and now say, oh, well, that didn't go, didn't happen, and we're not really sure what's going on. Now, I do understand, and I'm clearly on board with the final lot line delineate, because I know that was. That did pass for the purchase of this land, which went hand in hand with eliminating that road, and we certainly need to do a little bit more due diligence, at least to clarify that, and I don't think two weeks is a, is a big deal.
Yeah, we've been waiting three years to get this done, and we just had to put it off another, you know, three months to get the variance. So my point is just that, that is something that will be on the table, and is, you know, could possibly even happen, but it is not part of this subdivision approval. They're two separate things, maybe they were discussed around the same time. Obviously, it's all the same parcel of land, so I understand that discussions were, were done at the same time.
Yeah.
It was not part of this subdivision approval. So the fact that you want us to wait another two weeks to clarify something that doesn't have anything to do with the subdivision approval is where I'm, I'm having a problem with.
Well, I, I don't think, Wally, I don't think Jim or I were on board for that meeting, and, you know, I, I probably at this point want to just hear from Mike if that's true or not, and clarify it, and if you can wait, you know, just to make sure, because I, I haven't heard it. So I'm not, I don't, I'm not willing to sign something off that I, you know, that, that he said, she said, and I just want to clarify. I'm all right with the two weeks if you guys are.
Yeah, that's fine with me, and then we can get everything and, and take it from there. Somebody want to fly that motion, and we can just vote it in for June 3rd?
I, I don't, it's probably going to take five or 10 minutes once Mike's here, you know?
Yeah, I'm just talking about in between, the parties may be able to straighten this thing out. Once we make Mike aware that we need something from him, you know, they can get together, nail it down, and, and, and all of that. And I, quite frankly, I thought this was already done. I, I did not know that it wasn't passed on, so.
Good discussion, Walter, I've talked to you about this before, and I've told you several times that this isn't part of this subdivision approval, you just have disaffirmation with me every time.
No, because it's, it, logistically, that's, that's really not accurate. If you have a parcel of land.
It's not.
Part of the subdivision that is being under consideration, voted at a town meeting off in May, or will be parceled off, it's part of the subdivision, particularly if waivers were involved.
It was never discussed in all of the meetings we had on the approvals of this subdivision. It was never put into any decisions, it was never discussed as part of the subdivision approval. I mean.
So let's straighten it out.
Was there, Bob, the Bob Canyon was there, he's no longer here.
So let's, so let's straighten it out. So, so I need that motion to push the June 3rd, and we'll get it all straightened out.
I'm okay with that. Get all parties involved.
I'll second that.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, must continue to June 3rd, and Rebecca can.
Second.
No, June 2nd.
June 2nd, I'm sorry, June 2nd, okay. Okay, and Rebecca, can we get either email or letter out to Mike? And have him clarify also copy of the warrant article? And I'm sure it passed, I, I just, I know it passed, I just don't know what the vote was. Just so we can get all this together and do a quick resolve. And perhaps the parties, the who's could reach out to Mike in the meantime, and if there was something that could be resolved, that would even be better as well, so we could nail it down and close the door on this.
Yes, I will get that information as requested.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Deuce, thank you. Okay, Bob?
Okay, next thing is a public hearing on Benjamin Street Extension.
Mr. Chair, we still have one other item under the discussion, which is the 37 Wood Street for Jay Ogden.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, the other one is 37 Wood Street, informal discussion on formal filing or a conservation subdivision filing.
All right. Who's Jay presenting on that?
Oh, yeah, I guess I am. You guys probably remember that I'm working on a piece of land on Wood Street that's about 30 acres or so. And I was in a couple of weeks ago to get a lot line adjustment to convey about eight and a half acres to one of the abutters, and I had a plan that I wanted to show. I had a plan I wanted to show you guys about a three lot A and R subdivision plan, and get some insight on how to move forward with getting it approved.
So that's 22 acres, and where's the frontage?
It's a little difficult for me to point things out on this, because I don't have any control over a curse or anything, but at the bottom of the screen is a house by, right where Rebecca's pointing. There's, there will be about 450 feet of street frontage there, which would be, would be enough for three house lots.
Okay.
And obviously, there's a wetlands area that impacts the access to the house location sites.
So it looks like three wetland crossings.
Yeah.
So my, my dilemma was trying to figure out how to get a common driveway approved for the three house sites. And it appears that Groveland doesn't have a capacity other than a CSD plan to approve or allow a common driveway. So I was considering servicing the furthest, I guess, left lot with the driveway is actually shown connecting to Wood Street. Service that lot with a driveway, and then have the other two lots accessed by a driveway from the rear side by reconfiguring the rear of the lots to also connect to Wood Street. But that access would not be across its street frontage, but it would be from Wood Street. And they would each have two separate, about 15 foot wide driveways apiece.
So which are you filing?
Well, that's, that's what I'm here to talk about.
Sounds like a CSD.
I wanted to submit it as three house lots that had conforming street frontage, that conformed to the area requirements. But there doesn't seem to be an avenue to allow a common driveway.
Yeah, the, if you go in under the A and R, okay, and under the A and R handbook, you have to have adequate access from your frontage and access from the frontage. If you go in on a subdivision, okay, then you build a roadway, and then the frontage is derived from the roadway. Okay, under a CSD plan, you, you can do some things which are similar to the subdivision plan. And then half the land, so that'd be 11 acres, would be handed over to the town, can't be a wetland, can't be anything like that. So you have the required 10 acres, I think it is, under CSD, but we, I don't understand which one you're trying to do. For three house lots, I mean, you got it, you got to access the frontage under the A and R plan, so it's either, you're either doing access from the frontage on the A and Rs, which is, as just pointed out, the three wetlands crossings, okay? And there's plenty of room out there, how big are those lots?
I think they're about three and a half acres.
Each?
Yes.
And I'm looking at where you have, that's right on the very bottom of the plan, is that what I'm looking at? Where those are, our future are going to be?
They're all back. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
Where.
The house sites would be located on top of the hill.
The curse is moving right now.
Where the circles are.
Okay.
Hang on one second.
So Jay, it sounds like you're looking for guidance, huh?
Yes.
So Wally, he's looking for an idea, because he can't do a common driveway because of our bylaws, which would be more feasible to him for three lots.
Yeah, we eliminated those a while ago, because we had some serious issues on more than two subdivisions. But I, I think the CSD is, is doable, but you got to file for a CSD, and then you got to see what the plan does. So the A and R's out, or a conventional subdivision plan.
He waits the next town meeting, and we put together something to amend the bylaw, so he, you know, that you can have an adequate common driveway.
Well, here's the problem that we had.
Find apartment.
The problem with the common driveways, I'm going to point out too. Okay, and it got ugly, and it was only two houses, okay? And it was on Marion Avenue. And on Marion Avenue, okay, which originally was a subdivision that was built or designed in the 80s, then it sat, okay? And then it was sold off, and then it would became, they actually expired, it went seven years, and so it was expired. So it came back with a modification, and then was approved, and then it was built, and then it was sold, the last two lots. And the fella that put in the last two lots decided he didn't want to build two driveways, and he just threw in a common drive. And then, when the neighbors moved in, and he just happened to be one of them, and that didn't go well, he blocked the driveway on a hill. And so there was no access to the other party to get in. I mean, and there were several meetings with the board, hearings, the police were involved, and all kinds of things, and then ultimately two court cases. So that was, that was one of them, and then the other one was that it, there was an access down, and there were three house lots off it, and the, the actual residents got into it themselves and had all kinds of issues. And what comes up is plowing, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera.
But they also, we also like Cyril, that, you know, stuff, there has been, you know, those are two examples, but they do work in.
They do work, I, I put in probably three or four common drives in town of Groveland.
Right, and, and one of them didn't work, but the other one didn't work.
Which one didn't work?
King Street.
Which one?
The one off King Street with the three houses with the, that Neve took over. That one didn't work, because the neighbors just got all bent out of shape about it.
So anyways.
The neighbors got, well, the neighbors got bent out of shape, because Neve bought the land out back, and they wanted to loop the water through there.
No, that was before that, that was.
No, 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 no.
No, that was, no, I think Bob's right, because I was involved in that project for four lots, but anyways, I think.
And because, and another thing was, if you have it in the deed, when they buy the land, they have to split, split the cost of the driveway, maintenance of the driveway, and everything else. It, it doesn't matter, I mean, they have abide by that.
Well, guess what? And when it doesn't, it goes to court, and that's what happened on Marion Avenue.
Then the judge has something to rule on, because it's all in their deeds, so.
But wait a minute. It is not.
Okay, hey, guys, I think we're getting off track here, I don't think it's going to be any good right now, because I still think, even if we allow common driveways, I think Rebecca, if I'm right, we're a year away from it, because it has to go to town meeting.
Yes.
Right, right. It would have to go to town meeting.
Okay, so I think Jay's kind of looking at like, you know, for, you know, constructive criticism here to see what would fly and what won't fly.
Well, I think normal subdivision or CSD would fly, but there are restrictions, or requirements rather, for each of them, and I don't know.
Do you have the 50% of open space to give that's not wetlands at this point?
I'd have to reread your, your regulation as far as what ratio has to be wetlands, what has to be upland. I'm sure I can make that math work to conform to your regulations.
I'm reading them now, it's just, you know, basically, you know, 50% of the total area, open space comply with other requirements of the process of CSD, and I think that has to go to what, conservation maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So Jay, did you get a copy of the Wood Street subdivision plan, which is that parcel you, you purchased? Did you actually get the final set of plans on that? Because that was the actual application, which was ultimately approved, was the CSD. And you may not have to recreate the wheel there as far as lot lines per se. You know, still got to come in for all the review and approvals, but, but it may give you a better idea on that, because your predecessor had the same problem, he was putting in something, but it did work, and even conservation and open space was happy with the outcome, and then it just never materialized. I never did get a straight answer on why that had never happened, but, but there was a lot of good for that. It was turning into horse trails, and it actually connected to the town forest trail on the other side. So there was a lot of good with that. So if you can do the CSD, that's the best way, because then the town has the ability to grant waivers. And it's a, it's a more complex project, but the town gets the benefit, and that's, that's really the impetus for the board to grant a waiver. It's not to benefit you so that you don't have to put something in that's required, it's actually a benefit to the town. What does the town get out of that exchange for waiver if one is required? And CSD, that's why we wrote it, because it seemed like a really good way to reduce the infrastructure. And with three house lots, you really wouldn't need the same, those are still pretty big lots. If you've got 22 acres and you're building on 10.
Could, could I make a couple of comments here?
Sure, go ahead.
I had a number of conversations with Jim Freer before he left. And your CSD provisions are great, it does help maintain open space, but for the vast majority of town, it's, it's cost prohibitive to do a CSD project, because you can't afford to bring sewer service to it. Sewer service involved in the CSD allows the board to reduce frontage in lot areas. Without sewer, the way I read it, the way Rebecca's read it, the way some other people have read it, there's no avenue really, no clear avenue to get any reductions on frontage or lot areas. So these three lots, if I go through the process of designing a CSD project, the plan's going to come back looking like this, three lots with 150 feet of street frontage. They're going to be roughly three acre, three, three and a half acre lots. And I would like to get away from the common driveway. I'd like to allow this first lot that's shown in this plan, Lot R, to connect to Wood Street over the crossing that's shown. And I'd like to be able to connect Lot Q and Lot P, which is the next two further back, across another access point to Wood Street at the top left-hand side of the, the screen, with two separate, albeit at some points will be parallel, two separate driveways that come up the other side of the hill to those lots, and reconfigure those rear lot lines so that the driveways fall entirely within the lot areas. And that seems consistent with what you guys have permitted on Seven Star Road at 123 Seven Star Road, where their street frontage is off Center Street, but they have a driveway access off Seven Star. And also whatever's going on over at, is it 245 King Street? The Kowalski's project? It seems like this, that got filed as a definitive subdivision plan. I can't really fathom how this, a roadway being constructed on that plan, but those are. But those are the examples that I'm trying to, to, to plan off of. And if I could share you just a, uh, image of a plan that I have drafted that Bill Holt's working on, I could show you more clearly where the driveways would come in for the other two lots. And see if that's something you guys would be receptive to. The town still gets their 11 acres of, of land. Um, I just don't have to go back through the hoops of the CSD project process. Can I share you a, another image that I have?
Sure, go ahead.
I apparently can't until, oh, maybe I can now. Um, this plan basically is a segment of that other plan that shows the, uh, three lot areas. This is Lot R, I believe. Lot Q and Lot P. These each have 150 feet of street frontage on Wood Street. Mike Dempsey and, and Sam Jocelyn had no issue with issuing a permit on this lot.
That's Lot R, right?
Lot R. Uh, improving the, the access across that wetland area. Um, and then these other two lots would be serviced, would be reconfigured so that this area would be combined with Lot Q. And it would have a driveway access that parallels land that I recently donated to conservation. That remaining strip is about 40 feet wide or so. So there'd be two 20-foot driveways or three 20-foot land areas um, next to each other to about this point. And then they would diverge and go to the, their respective house sites.
Hey, for a second, have you, have you consulted with the fire department?
Um, no, not, not yet. There, I am familiar with some regulations that, that um govern, I guess, uh, private roadways and driveway accesses. But there's exclusions to those for houses, sorry, for driveways or private roads that service less than two homes. And those actually, those regulations actually refer mostly to common driveways and private roadways.
Jay, those look like thousand-foot driveways.
Uh, from this section of Wood Street to here is, I believe, about 500 feet. And my concept was initially to bring this one in and have an access path that looped around and connect it back out through here. So there was, there would be emergency access that, that the fire department should be somewhat happy about.
How much of a wetland crossing do you have on the other side? It's hard to see.
It's, um, right now, I, I think it's about 16 to 20 feet wide. Um, this is the path that the previous CSD plan had a roadway coming in through.
But if you go back to where, you know, typically where you would put the driveways in, how much, yeah, down there, how much of a wetland crossing do you have on the other two lots?
Right, on, on the first one, this.
Not a, not a, the, the two below a.
I just wanted to, to point out why we, we chose this spot. There's two existing culverts here that actually, this is street drainage. And this is a culvert for an intermittent stream that comes through here. These two culverts are actually causing some erosion in this wetland area into the side of the roadway. So, uh, meeting there with Mike Dempsey and, and the engineers, we determined that this would be a good place to actually cross to access all three. Um, but if it's only gonna be crossing to access one, the span that needs to be crossed here is like about 15 feet, I think. Um, when I went over this plan with Sam Jocelyn, he agreed that this middle lot had a lucery access. There's no real practical way to cross this wetland. And there's no, no real way to get onto the site off the side of the road. This other lot, he conceded that I could make an argument that you could access the lot to this area. And that it is somewhat feasible to cross this wetland at its narrow point. But I'd rather, I'd rather not do either of these crossings. And I'd say, just like some other property owners in town have, have worked out alternate solutions to access the buildable portions of their lot without actually crossing their street frontage. So I'm, I'm throwing this plan out there as, as my simplest solution.
Anybody have any input? It's hard to digest. I'll tell you, Jay, from, from how I'm looking at it, not having a plan in my hand.
Oh, yeah.
Not, not a full-blown plan. You can't.
It's so hard. They look like thousand-foot driveways that meander in and, you know, like, I get what you're saying.
Still a lot of wetlands to deal with.
Yeah.
And it resembles the Nantucket case, guys. Which was, uh, which was deemed illegal and Jocelyn touched on it with illusionary access. They're called the rat tails. And, but Jay, the, the A and R regulation.
Wide, Walter?
That.
That case were about 10 feet wide and they were, I think, 1,200 feet long.
Right, but, but look at the purpose of the A and R handbook. You're, you, you're trying to circ a regulation that is very clear. And you have another problem. If you access from those rat tails, okay, then you violate some of the other zoning regulations on how wide the, the lot can be. So you have two problems with the way that plan is. But I see another area in there. And why don't you just build a small cul-de-sac? Have one, one wetlands crossing from the Wood Street access and do a very tiny cul-de-sac and pick up the 150 frontage from there. And stay out of that. And, and yeah, you're gonna have one, so what? So you have a little mini three-lot subdivision. But you're trying to, you, you're trying to get out of doing a couple of regulations. You either apply for a CSD and apply for it, let's see where it goes. Okay, and there's, and there's actually stipulations with that. Or you, you come in with three A and Rs and, and you go get a wetlands crossing permission from the conservation, because the lots are huge. So you won't have a problem there. Okay, or you do a subdivision plan with a cul-de-sac and derive the frontage from the length of the roadway in. And, and you have solutions, but the A and R and this backdoor plan that you're trying to do, and if, if, if he's correct about the thousand-foot driveways, Brad, uh, it, you're completely trying to circumnavigate regulations that were put in place to prevent this. And, and to me, that sounds like you're trying to pull a fast one. And I don't like that.
So. To that characterization of this, um.
So then just pick one and file.
I gotta tell you, I agree with Wally.
I second that. I do too.
So a couple of points. These lots actually conformed to every criteria of your zoning provisions.
Not if you don't access from frontage.
Well, aside from the frontage issue.
Well, that's a big issue. You, you gotta, that's the, the first hurdle.
Absolutely. And, and that's the issue here to discuss. You mentioned that these didn't comply to other regulations like lot width, which your, your zoning still doesn't define lot width. It never did. And it.
Yeah, it did. It's 80% of the required, of the required frontage.
But it, it doesn't define how to measure lot width in that 80%.
It actually is very specific. 80% of the required frontage in the zone, which is 150 feet, which means your lot can't narrow down to less than a, than a 120 feet, but you also have to access from your frontage. That's in the mass, mass regulation.
Yeah, I'm here to talk to you about how to resolve the access issue.
Yeah.
You know, manner that you guys could steer me towards that's most agreeable to you. I'm not, I'm not trying to throw this plan out here and say, hey, stamp this. I'm not demanding A and R endorsement or anything. I'm just, this is what we came up with when we thought common driveways were a viable option.
Yeah, but they weren't. They've been, they've been eliminated for almost 15 years. So that wasn't even an option to, to consider. And it is not the board's responsibility, nor should it be its position to try to pass a bylaw to help a developer make profit off of town. So that's, that's the wrong tree you're barking up there.
I'm not asking you to do that. I'm not asking anybody to do that.
So why don't you, so why are you picking, eh, eh, what's wrong with a conventional subdivision off of Wood Street with a very small cul-de-sac to arrive at the frontage? You've got plenty of lot space. And leave that whole back section um, off Seven Star there, uh, out of it. And, and therefore you'd have your land to do just about everything. And yeah, you're gonna have a wetlands crossing. Guess what? You're gonna have one anyway. Or you don't have three lots and you only have one.
I'm fully aware that I'm gonna have a wetlands crossing. It's, it's pretty obvious. First client of the plant. I already have a wetlands crossing in place.
Okay, so what's wrong with that? Just put in one.
If you let me finish, I'll explain it. The existing wetland crossing creates a severe fill to maintain compliance with street grading.
How many, how many square feet?
Uh, they'll be cubic feet. Uh, I don't know. I haven't done that math, but it's about a seven to 10-foot fill to, to maintain the required grade coming off of Wood Street.
So what about the, now, i- is it possible to do what two other subdivisions did? And this one in particular too. This had a cast crossing on it. And I, I'm not sure if it's in the same position where you're pointing to, but it had a cast crossing that was approved previously by the Conservation Commission. And it also, it also helped out with the turtles and the whole nine yards with it. They actually put a little mini bridge in there. And it jumped over the wetland. Is that possible from where you're pointing?
Yeah, that, that's the type of improvement that would need to be made here. And I'm all for that. It would need to be made whether it was for two driveways or whether it was for a, a definitive subdivision roadway.
So then, so then use that as the primary access, cul-de-sac it, get your other three lots of 150 feet of frontage up the radius of the street length itself. And then you solve both problems. So what, what prevents you from doing that?
Nothing. Like I, like I said, I, I had spoken to Rebecca about this plan. And it was conceived to either utilize a common driveway through a CSD or a common driveway outside of a CSD.
Yeah, but you can't, you, you can't consider a common drive that doesn't exist in the town of Groveland. So that was a pipe dream uh, to start. So, so based on the current regs you have in the tools in the master general law, which is the A and R handbook, the Groveland subdivision rules and regs and the CSD, which one of those works for you to file an application so the board can review it? Because those are the only three toolboxes we have to deal with. We don't, we don't have common drives, so get that out the window.
Yeah.
Okay.
I need you to understand that it was only a week and a half to two weeks ago that I finally got clarification from your town council that said that they would back up the town opposing common driveways. In previous conversations for months with the planner and the building inspector, common driveways were an outside possibility. And nobody could definitively tell me why they could not be allowed. And I have that answer and I totally agree with it now.
Okay, but Jay, Jay.
You're a common driveway.
Jay, Jay, no one ever asked, you didn't ask me? I, I would have told you that point blank because it, it, it was a big deal. We passed that at town meeting because of the issues that we had. So that aside, and we can talk about that later, which you, we've given you some guidance. The rat tails, long thousand-foot driveways isn't gonna do it. Okay, and so if you can get a conventional subdivision in there, okay, uh, very short road length and then put in a cul-de-sac, you'll, you'll solve some of your problem. The CSD may work as well for the same thing, but either way, you get a wetlands crossing and don't put three bridges in. Put one, which was the previous plan, you know, a decade plus ago. And I'm sure Kantam would be happy to have one crossing.
Kantam preferred this crossing location to this crossing location?
Yeah, move it up, move it up off of Wood Street instead of Seven Star. Now that, that Seven Star culvert.
Conservation preferred this crossing location.
Yeah, but that's for that plan, not for a subdivision plan. But I'll tell you about that culvert that's down there. Okay, um, that was discovered with the previous engineers when they did this. And you know who it was that even told us that it was down there was Sue Vatch? Because they, they farmed the land down there and they pointed that out because that would flood occasionally. And there is a sewer prospect for this. Under the original plan, Nichols Trust.
The sewer prospect's dead.
Well, did you talk to Nichols Trust?
Nichols Trust was the, the entity that, that killed it because the previous developers had taken too long. With the expansion of Nichols Village, the sewer service is a little bit closer.
Right, right.
Lots in here. It's cost prohibitive to even bring their sewer service to Wood Street, let alone.
It's already on Wood Street. It's coming down, it comes down the backside.
They brought a sewer vein to Wood Street.
I believe it's down by the emergency gate.
No, it isn't. It's all, it's up to the top of the hill and that's it.
So they didn't bring it down the hill?
No.
Did they just bring the water down?
Yes.
Okay.
Water's looped, that's all.
So that's where that, both of those were gonna come down. So that explains that. So I don't know if that's, but that's a deal you would have to work with with Nichols. I'm sure that, you know, anybody would like to make a deal for that. The town certainly wanted it. We expected that because that was eventually gonna come down Wood Street and hook on down on Seven Star. And that was gonna do some nice things.
That plan set involved creating 27 house sites. I, I looked at it and laughed from the very beginning. Um, it was never my intention to build more than maybe six houses on the site. Um, can I switch plans for a second? And show you, this is just showing Lot R as a, as a single separate A and R plan. That I could take half a step forward. Do you have any legitimate objections to this? If I provide 150 feet of street frontage, have a driveway crossing here, loop it up here to a, to a house site, I will pursue a definitive plan for this rear section for the other two lots? And if it's practical to connect this to that?
No.
Yeah, I think, didn't you already chop up that lot?
That's, I was just gonna say, he's gonna, he's gonna try to get an A and R and then he's gonna try to do the other two some other, other way. Let's, let's do it all at once. Try to do three lots.
There's, there's economics involved in this situation.
Yeah, but it, as far as the planning board goes, we don't care about your economics. We care about following the regulations and not screwing the town over. Or attempt to put too much in there that you can't put in, or the future residents of this town who will be representing, and that's who we work for. We don't work for you. Okay, we have to look out for them because they're not here yet. Okay, so, so Jay, you have possibilities there. You're just being a little bit on, on the stubborn side and a little bit too ingenious to try to do that, to circumvent three known avenues that you can do there. And none of them are gonna be easy and that parcel wasn't easy to begin with. So you, you've gotta find a way to do it. But don't look to the board to plan your subdivision and then come back in and say, oh, you said we could do this because we're not gonna do it. You have, you have a competent engineer, I assume. So get them to design some plans, submit them to conceptual review, which is your best deal because it's only 500 bucks and you don't spend a lot of money. And submit three plans if you want. That's 1,500 bucks and we'll have Pete review them. Okay, and then from that forth, you might get some really good input as to which way you can go. It's the cheapest way to go. Um, as far as the plan goes and an application goes. That's why we have that conceptual and it's very cheap. So why didn't you do that and give us three plans and three conceptuals and let Pete crunch them and see, see which one works for you?
I agree. I, I gotta say, Jay, I agree. I mean, we gotta, we gotta, I, and I wish, you know, hopefully maybe one more Zoom meeting and then we're back at, you know, back in business, I would hope. so we can actually take a look at a viable plan. But it's hard, w- we can't, I can't design it, but we can't design it or offer designs from this board.
I'm certainly not asking you to design.
No, and I, I, you know, and if you, the other alternative would be if the town chooses to do so, you're gonna have to wait until the next town meeting to have a common driveway. I mean, that's the only other alternative.
I can determine the common driveway will never work. It's outlawed and it's outdated, correct?
No, well, there's, there's ways of doing it, but if you wanted to take that chance.
I'd like to just say, I, I never want to discuss a common driveway again. I mean, it's a dead issue for me, just like.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so Pete, are you still on board? Are you still here, Pete?
Yep.
Do you agree with the, uh, submit three conceptuals with different avenues, one CSD?
Of course he does.
And, and one A and R and one conventional subdivision cartoon? And see, see what best works there? I mean, I think it's the best thing for your buck and at least you'd have some guidance.
Yeah, I mean, that would work to me from looking at it just real quick tonight. It, it looks like it wants to be a, a small cul-de-sac, that's just my initial thoughts.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because I, I think that would work.
My initial desire here was to talk to you guys about what, I don't, I, I can't wrap my head around what has happened on other plans in this town recently.
Yeah, but wait a minute, that doesn't matter because every other plan, whether it was approved or a different set of circumstances, was on a different parcel of land.
Absolutely.
It's not a pretzel, and I understand some of the ones you were talking about and why they were done that way. Okay, but they all had access.
I was just hoping for some sort of.
So let's, let's not waste the board's time or yours, and let's move forward. If, i- if you want to submit three conceptuals, I, I would recommend that because then we all get to see it. And you get to see a different plan, and it's the cheapest review. You don't have to blow five grand, ten grand, five hundred bucks, that's it. It's real, real inexpensive, doesn't require a lot of detail, okay? And then make a decision from there, okay? But please, you know, the board's got a lot of stuff to do, we, we'd love to brainstorm, you, you know, on things, but we, we gotta move forward on this and we're not gonna design your subdivision that you profit, whatever that is, a lot of money by the time that it's done, okay?
Can you design anything for me? I'm just, I was hoping to come here with some sort of, leave with some sort of understanding of.
And I think you do.
Nevers or reductions that I could anticipate for a definitive subdivision roadway to service three houses. It's gonna, that happens a lot. You have the town having eleven acres of open space, but I haven't left with anything other than.
Well, nothing prevents you, Jay, from building a little cul-de-sac, confining with a subdivision regs and still donating eleven acres. Nothing, nothing prohibits you from doing that, so, uh, but you, you know, I think, I think you've got a good handle on, on, on what you could possibly do, and then just go decide yourself and with your engineer and, uh, and, and see what you want to submit for a conceptual. Don't go to the full-blown detail and waste a lot of time and money. Get it in quick on a conceptual, look at the regs on that, it's real simple. And you can submit that in between a meeting and, and Pete can have an answer back, you know, in, in short order, and then you'll know what to do. And then the board will give its input when, uh, on, once we see what that is.
All right, we, 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 we beat this to death now, so.
Yeah.
We, we get some other things, issues to keep going on with, so, um, I'm not getting you off, Jay, but, uh.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
No, I gave you it to some time and we talked about it, so, um, let's continue on with, uh, hearings here.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions, Jay?
No, thank you.
Yep.
Good day.
Okay. All right, uh, public hearing. Benjamin Street Extension Modification to Hulu Homes. I have to re, here's myself, so, Wally.
Okay, so is this the continued hearing?
Yes.
On Benjamin, can motion open the, uh, continued hearing?
This is not the continued hearing, this is a new hearing, this is a, um, the modification that the board had asked for the file, so this was noticed in the newspaper. The abutters had received, um, a, a certified, uh, letter. So this is a brand-new hearing opening this evening.
Do we have the abutter with us today?
I believe we have multiple abutters, but the one in, the direct abutter who has the encroachment is on the call.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, uh, does anyone have the, uh, the article that was put in the newspaper that we could read it? For to open up the hearing?
It's essentially what's drafted in the agenda, would you like me to read it?
Yes, could you please, for the record?
This is a new public hearing for Benjamin Street Extension Modification, applicant requesting a modification to the approved Benjamin Street Extension Definitive Subdivision approved by the Planning Board on November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, endorsed definitive subdivision of land entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan, Benjamin Street Extension, a private way for one single-family lot in the Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance File law, August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and a final revision date of November fourth, two thousand and nineteen, prepared by in design. The modification of nine revisions to the roadway, specifically changing the grade slope and adding a retaining wall and guardrail. The site is located in the residential one R one zoning district at thirty-eight Benjamin Street, Groveland Mass, zero one eight three four, assessors map forty-six, parcel eighteen feet.
Any objections to the notice as it appeared in the paper? Anyone on the call? None noted?
No.
Okay, uh, need a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, one, two, three ayes, okay, the hearing is now open, who's, uh, presenting?
Um, I will present the plans if I could.
Okay.
The changes that were proposed.
And you submitted those to Pete, right?
Yes.
And the John Paulson, I think, was the other engineer, is that correct?
I gave them to the Duhulus and to Rebecca, I did not personally send them. I know his ad, his email address, I did not send them to him, but he may have them, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't believe that the, um, abutter has hired Mr. Paulson to represent her and/or review any of these modifications. Mr. Paulson was specifically hired by the abutter to review the survey and to, um, clarify and confirm that the points shown were in fact the right points, which they were not. Um, but he did not retain him to represent her and/or review the matter any further.
Okay, well, she sent a, a copy of the plans?
Yes, she was, and she is on the call this evening.
Okay, good, well, well, thank you, we'll, we'll get to hear from her shortly. Okay, sorry, Bill, for the interruption, why don't you carry on?
Um, actually, if, um, if Rebecca could put the plan up, I would be able to talk on, that way it'd be easier. Yes, I saw the whole thing. Okay, if, um, Rebecca, if you could zoom into the plan view a little bit closer?
Before we go any further, have they resolved the issue about encroaching on her property?
Um, I cannot speak to that, I don't know if the Duhulu can speak to it, but I do show one of the encroachments on, on this plan. I did not show the one at the beginning, um, at the time, couldn't, wasn't aware there was until I saw the plan that John Paulson did. And I don't disagree that they went over the line in the front as well. But at this point, I was trying to de- address the, the issue in the back where the grading was. So.
Okay.
So I guess. I'm sorry.
Did you say we had two encroachments now?
There is, I think if you, if Rebecca has a John Paulson plan, you could put that up and you could take a look at it, I don't disagree with it, so, I think we saw it last time.
Yeah, okay, okay. And you just want to continue with your briefing?
Uh, well, it's gone now, so.
Oh.
I don't know if it was due to a clerical error by some other mistake, but unfortunately the plans weren't, uh, available on the website, like the public notice had mentioned. Just thought I'd note that.
Were they in the town clerk's office?
I didn't drive down and check.
Rebecca, do you know if they were submitted there?
We delivered, we delivered copies to the planning board, to, uh, Conservation Commission, Water Department, all the boards required, we delivered copies to all of the different boards. Um, I think we have some responses back from the Fire Department and from the Highway Department.
I did, I did distribute the plan electronically to all the appropriate departments. Um, I, um, I apologize, I failed to put them up on the website.
All right, did the clerk have a copy?
Yes, because they were filed.
Okay, so that's the, that's the PB requirement right there. So it's unfortunate that the folks didn't get to see it, but as, as long as the clerk had it, it meets the requirement. Uh, but I don't disagree that, uh, here we are all looking at it on Zoom, I might add, which is not the greatest tool for engineering plans. There's no, so, all right, so, so now that we got a plan here, and this is John's plan that we're looking at?
Yeah. Okay, so on his plan, you can see the, the corner at Nine Bell in Benjamin Street is off by, it looks like about four inches, point, point two nine.
Yeah.
And so that one was fairly close, uh, then that was found, I did not set that point, that was already there. Um, and then the point down on the corner of Benjamin and Park, which is the area where the larger encroachment occurred, um, that pipe was off by eight feet, which I did confirm before they started to work. And when I state the lot lines out, they were more in line with the line we're showing the plans, not that eight-foot-long pipe. So that pipe was there, but it was off, and we noted it.
So eight, eight point two feet, yeah, let's cut it out.
Yeah. I, I don't think, and John Paulson's lines are slightly different, but they're not largely different, and he can speak for himself, not largely different than what we showed on our plan. And had it not been for the fact that that pipe was there, that the contractor saw and probably thought it was the correct one, um, that wouldn't have probably happened, because I did stake it out according to my plan, and I believe our stakes are pretty close on the same line as that John Paulson had shown, and they were supposed to be back four feet from those. So when they went over the line that was based on our stakes, there was an error on their part when they did it, so. I wasn't there, I had to site at all times, so I couldn't tell them at that point.
Okay.
So that, I don't disagree that both these encroachments have occurred. Yeah, I think my encroachment I show on my plan is very similar in size to this one right here on the lower part of the, uh, screen. The one up top, I did not show because I was not aware that it was an encroachment when I did my.
The one up, this is John, the one up top was very small, but I figured I'd put it on there just because it was an encroachment.
Okay. All right, so let's get to the fix, uh, which is what we're here for. So this is the mod here, and so, Bill, what's, what are you proposing? Pete, we want to hear from you.
If you can go back to the other plan, I can go through my revisions that I made, and I, and we have some comments from different boards and from T E C. And I think we can go through those, and we just basically go over my revisions, uh, real quickly. So what we did is a couple of different things. Because the grade was off on the right-hand side of the road, we tried to lower that grade as much as possible, the proposed grade we were gonna modify. So we tipped the roadway from the, originally we had it tipped towards the, towards the, uh, top side of, of the, uh, view here, towards the two lots, new lots, and away from the suites of property. Um, in this particular plan, we did, we wanted to lower the left, right-hand side, so we super elevated the road to the right, put the berm, uh, the pick-up berm along the left-hand side, right-hand side of the road, uh, and then relocated the drainage to collect the water that runs down the side of the street and modified the, uh, elevations of the pond based on the new topo. And we also shifted the road slightly to the left as we got past Station one fifty, which is right about where this driveway is, right here, um, where the driveway is for both the number thirty-four and the driveway for, it goes to the back of the garage of the suites of property, which you can see on the planner, about right in the middle of the, um, suites of property on Benjamin Street. So by shifting the road to the left beyond that point, we got it away from the suites of property line, but helped us do some grading, because we get, you know, the ability to grade, they own all that property and have, uh, an easement for grading on number thirty-four. So we were able to change the grading and shift the roadway over to the left along from Station one plus fifty to the end. Um, we did the same thing in the Park Street, uh, spur road there. We shifted that away from the suites of property, uh, to help grading, be able to do the grading between edge of the pavement and the property line. Then we also changed the grades from still approximately Station one plus seven, oh seven, down to the intersection at twelve percent, and then we changed the grades beyond that in the two, uh, legs of the T-turnaround. And then we, as a result of the grading that we discovered, we had to to the corner of Park Street, it'll be from zero feet high to three feet high, then we're back to zero feet high at the end. And then we put a, a, yeah, we on top of that to keep it from, uh, safety from the cars going over the edge. Um, we did show a, a new gravel driveway access to the suites of property off of the Park Street spur down towards Catch Basin Two, which is the lower part of the, um, the spur road turnaround, T-turnaround.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I believe that's basically the, the major changes in the plan in terms of the grading and the location of the, of the pavement. We've shown the encroachment area, I get two hundred and thirty-five square feet on my calculation, and it would propose to remove that and restore it. I can add the other one, I wasn't aware of, I can add the other one and do the same thing, propose to, uh, remove it, any alteration and restore it. Actually, I think both those areas had a Japanese knotweed in them, and I'm assuming you don't want us to put Japanese wa- knotweed back, so we probably just put, like, lomen seed in the top part of it, on the bottom part, we'd probably bring that soil back to the property line, a little bit beyond it, to the wall, and to the, down to the original topsoil, and then regitate that with a, with a seed mixture. I don't, these were removed in that section of encroachment? On either one, actually, I don't think any trees were removed. Uh, I don't, I wasn't there during it, because during that, that is, uh, what happened, so I know there's a filler on a couple of them that may, if you leave it, would be a problem. But while we will pull that grade back if this, uh, all those modifications approved.
Mm-hmm.
And so those are the significant changes in the design. Um, again, we, we maintained the twelve percent, but it is longer, it's about a hundred and forty somewhat feet long versus the original fifty-foot long that we proposed down near the intersection of the two roadways. And I understand, we, uh, report from the Fire Department, and my understanding is that ten percent is their desired maximum grade. And but there is an all, you know, there's a clause in the regulations that say that if we were to sprinkle assist, sprinkle the house, that they would allow up to twelve percent, um, that would be allowable. Um, so your options are, at this point, we could try to modify it and bring it back down to ten percent. That might require, um, further relocation of the roadway to the left in the right way, and maybe possibly a higher wall along that section that's seventy-five feet long. Um, I guess is a foot and a half higher than the wall. It may, it may stay the same if I shift it over enough to, to get the grade to, uh, be higher in the slope. I, I haven't tried that yet, but I know if the Duhulu would rather not go with the sprinkler system, we would have to modify, uh, grades again.
All right, so, Bill, what was the proposed grade? Twelve is huge. Nevermind, and that's not very wide to get up a, a pretty heavy.
Actually, actually, Wally, it's, it's wider than the road, it's out there now. Benjamin Street is only about fifteen, fifteen to sixteen foot wide for the most of its.
Well, it's a hundred years old or so, but yeah, what's, what was the proposed grade?
Proposed grade was four percent to ten percent to twelve percent, and then back to three and a half percent. So it kind of, we had some vertical curves in there to transition from each grade change.
Yeah.
And now we, in order to make, to lower the grade as much as possible, we're trying to do 12% the whole way. I do believe we could, I already started to try to, after I got the note from the fire chief, I was trying to redo the grades so that we could eliminate 12% altogether. I was able to fairly easily make it 10% to a small section, even smaller than proposed. We originally asked a 50-foot length of 12%. We can actually get it down to about 35 feet of 12% and back to 3.5%. So that would mimic the same grades that were proposed and approved originally. That may still require the Houlish to sprinkle other proposed new house.
Do you have a profile view of that roadway?
Yeah, it's down to the left, if Rebecca can move it up.
Holy crap.
Also note that the grades, just in front of number 32, which is the Houlish's old house, I think are on the original plan, I think they're on this plan as well, maybe on sheet five, the original plan. We looked at those grades, they're actually in the 14% to 16% range for about 100 feet going past the Houlish house. Also, if you know the area at all, if you've driven up there ever, you will drive up Pond Street, which is the entrance to the whole development area. That grade is obviously significantly higher than 15% for a good distance.
Right, 18%.
It's pretty steep. So it's not, and this is serving one house versus all the rest of the houses that are up there, so it's not out of character for the neighborhood, that's for sure. Definitely wouldn't be out of place.
You know, the old cottages and hunting lodges and stuff like that, you know, it didn't really matter, but.
Well, it does.
This is going on.
It does matter, I mean, it's there, it's supposed to exist.
When they were built, I'm sure the old camps, you know, most people had four-wheel drives to get up there, but is that it for the, for the presentation? Love to get Pete on this to see what he's come up with.
I believe, I got his review as well, and I'd like him to go through it.
Pete, why don't you just brief the, if you don't mind? Could you just brief this with, with your report in mind and just spill that out to the board? And, I mean, we do have some steep roads in town and on certain areas, and I understand the existing topography, but, I mean, it'd be nice to get some of that down if we could, but let's, let's hear what you have to say.
Sure thing. I'll just, I'll just kind of read through my letter as quickly as I can here, I have like 20 comments. So the prepared plan included adjustments to the existing topography and the proposed grades on the roadway. In some areas, the topography changed by up to six feet vertically. That's kind of why the wall is needed where it is now. So the revised plan shows a retaining wall approximately 75 feet in length, and there's a wood guardrail proposed at the top of the wall. The plan provides two points of access to the property at Nine Bell Street, one entrance is on Benjamin Street and one is on Park Street. The profile of the road has changed slightly from what was originally approved. The approved plan had a 12% section, that was a waiver that the board granted for 50 feet of 12% slope. The revised plan currently shows the 12% slope at 146 feet in length.
You're correct.
No. The crosslop of the driveway is reversed, it originally pitched away from where the retaining wall is now, now it's coming the opposite direction, but shouldn't be a factor because there's a bituminous berm curving proposed on the edge of the road that will channel stormwater to the catch basins.
Okay.
As far as the stormwater management goes, the plan that's shown now is essentially the same as what was approved, no major changes except for a couple of grade changes to the infiltration basin. One recommendation that I do have is to create a berm at the top of the driveway to the Suites of property, just to make sure that water bypasses that driveway and does not flow off the street into her property.
That's the one by the garage?
Yeah, by the garage, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So in the Groveland subdivision regulations, there's a section that says that the grades of streets shall conform as closely as possible to the original topography. Obviously, you know, the caveat to that is it still needs to meet the standards of a roadway design. So later in the subdivision regs, the maximum centerline grade for streets shall be, for a minor street in a low-density area, 10% maximum. So they're proposing just higher than, than what's allowed per the subdivision regs. And during the initial review, the waiver was granted to go to 12% for 50 feet in length. The fire department did weigh in and provided a comment that they, the road should not exceed 10% due to concerns about access that Bill already got into. Sounds like they do not want to go with the sprinkler route in the housing, in the houses, so to me, it seems like the board would, would want to heed that comment from the fire department and ask for the road to be at a 10% slope to meet those requirements. The next section of my letter is about ASHTO, the Green Book, the Policy on Geometric Design of Highways and Streets. This was, this section was really just kind of a rationalization of what grades are allowed per ASHTO. So the grades allowed per ASHTO are slightly different than what's allowed in the subdivision regulations. They do allow up to 12% for a roadway that, with a design speed of 30 miles per hour. And the last section is about the encroachments and the restoration plan. So the Atlantic survey shows two areas of encroachment. So the, the plan that's in front of the board should be revised to show that second area. And then the area that's, that's showing the encroachment on the plan in front of the board tonight has a call-out that says to be removed and restored. And I think that further detail should be provided, Bill did speak to it. You know, I think the plan is lomen sea to try and cover that up. And this might be a good transition, but my final comment is that the owner of Nine Bell Street, which is the house with the encroachments on it, should be involved in the development of the restoration plan to ensure that all parties fully understand what's happening and are happy with the final result.
It's funny that you say that, Pete, because my biggest concern is the owner of that, of that house. And I want to know, Bill, have you been talking to her regularly? Is she pleased with what regulate, what changes you've made? And is she happy with what's being done? Because that's where I'm coming from. I'm looking at as a homeowner myself, what would happen to me? So I'm, you know, I'm being a little biased here because I'm looking at it from her rent. I'm sorry, guys, if that troubles you, but that's how I'm looking at it.
I have, I have not spoken with Mrs. Sweetser. I don't know if the Houlishes have, they can probably weigh in and let you know what conversations they've had.
I think she's on the meeting tonight, right, Rebecca?
Yes, she is. I don't know if you would like to have her speak. Nancy, are you able to speak? Or unmute yourself?
Or John?
Yeah, I was just looking to see if she... Okay, she's, her speaker is on now, but I've talked with Nancy. Can you slide back up to the plan part of the view on that sheet? On the copy, the second, the second access point in down near the detention area, it looks like you do what I've done once in a while, and you've copied and pasted, but you copied and moved, you didn't copy, you just moved it up to the upper proposed 12-foot-wide driveway apron. You didn't leave the second one labeled. So we should relabel that, and
See it now.
Nancy gave me the indication that she didn't really have much of a problem with what was being done out here, other than worrying about the encroachments, and she didn't want any further encroachment. I'm going to speak for Nancy, she can tell me to be quiet if she wants. To me, if it's better for the two houses there and better for the town, Bill, what's the maximum height of the wall? Is it three feet down around where the curve is?
It's three feet, actually closer to the middle, maybe a little bit more in the third, third way in, and then to about two-thirds, maybe three-fourths of the way down.
If you're going to have a wall from zero to three back down to zero,
Yeah.
Why not make it to zero to three foot 11, so we stay under the structural and back down, so you can drop your road down a little bit, because it's only accessing one house down at the end, but if it gives you any benefit to do that, I don't see the difference for Nancy between a three-foot wall and a three foot 11 wall. You've given her two points of access into her lot, which was one of her concerns. One of the other concerns, I, I noticed, I sent Rebecca several pictures that I had taken of down along the roadway here, and between where your upper 12-foot apron is and where that smaller encroachment is, there's some, the cut-up there was a little bit steeper, there's some trees, I think they're still within the right-of-way, but they're not in good shape, they're going to need to be cleaned up. So that's not for you, Bill, that's just telling the board. I don't know if Rebecca can put up the pictures that I sent her or not, but you'll see it in those pictures.
Are they, are they on the, in the right-of-way?
I think they're in the right-of-way pro-
Couldn't hear him. Yeah.
Okay, this is Nancy, and am I on?
You are.
Yep.
This technology is totally beyond me, I hope you understand. My, my problem is, I spent a year coming to your meetings, trying to understand and trying to learn. As a layperson, a 12% elevation didn't sound like much until I saw the construction, and it became the Great Wall of China. Really kind of upset me. I mean, three generations of my family have paid taxes on this land, and we've had unfettered access to that back lot. Now I'm going to have extremely limited access. That really kind of bothers me. I don't know how, I'm not, I'm not a public, could it public speaking? The fact that the access at the bottom of the lot is going to be extremely limited, and I have the Great Wall of China that goes along beside the land. You know, that, I just, I'm having a hard time, you know, we, as I say, I'm not a public speaking person. I'm just having a hard time comprehending how that is possible. I mean, Steve has a right to build a house wherever he wants, and I understand that, but at what cost to my land?
Well, that's the question, what are you going to be happy with?
Well, something that doesn't look quite like the Great Wall of China coming down the side of my lot.
Well, the only thing that we determined so far would be the difference between 10 feet and what, 12 feet, guys? That's the minimum?
10% and 12%.
Okay. So what I'm saying to you, Nancy, is 10% would be the lowest we could all agree with, correct, guys?
Yeah, pretty much. So 10%, 10% will actually make the fill higher.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point that Bill just made. So if the board does ask the Houlishes to increase the slope to 10%, the fill at the bottom of the hill is going to get higher, because they're being held at where they're tying in at the top at Bell Street. So when you reduce that slope to 10%, the fill is going to, the roadway is actually going to be, I mean, over a span of 150 feet, that's, that's about three, three feet vertically.
Now, I can shift it to the left some more, and that would take some of the curse off that, but I'm still anticipating if I go 10% that it might be a four-and-a-half-foot wall versus a, versus a three-foot wall. It might still be longer.
How big is that guardrail, Bill? Because you've already beyond four feet anyway, what's the, how big is the guardrail?
The guardrail will be two, two-and-a-half feet tall, 30 inches.
So you got, so you got a six-foot wall?
No, the guy wrote on the pile of the wall, it's just a guardrail.
From a aesthetics point of view, when she looks out her house, she sees a wall and an additional two feet of, you know.
Yeah.
Is this a public road?
Yeah. So, so back to the question, so we're going to have, if you go three foot 11, close enough to four feet, plus a two-foot guardrail, we got a six-foot height, is that correct?
Yes.
And that goes for how far? How far?
Well, it's only, it's only going to be a maximum height for about a third of the wall, so about 25 feet would be that height. It'll taper down on either end, because
Right, okay. So we get up a slight, not that
From zero to the top, then back down to zero.
Yeah.
Over how many regulations?
And if I do move the road over a little bit more to the left, I can probably put a little more fill on the downhill side, so it won't be, it won't be as exposed, as much wall exposed, but I'll have some of the grade between that and the property line. So it could be less exposed, actually, if I do move the road over about four feet to the left. Kind of already done in my initial review of the comments from the, from the plan, from the fire department, try to comply with that.
So which?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm trying to, Nancy, I'm trying to, I completely understand, you don't have to be a public speaker, just say what you feel here, we're all, we're all here, we work for you, by the way, as elected officials, we work for you, the residents of the town. So I'm trying to figure this thing out here, we have the encroachment issue, so I want to hear what the fix is for that eventually, and Nancy I'm sure wants to hear that too. And then we've got, I understand taking the grade down to 10% because that's what the fire department wants. I understand about elongating the stretch to pretty much get it lower a little bit on the grade as well, but aesthetically, at the end of the day, we have, we have the mechanics of getting the road to meet the rank, but the aesthetics at the end of the day, when Nancy drives up and gets to her house and has the access to that back lot, and I did see that's a paved driveway with gravel shoulders, is that correct, on both sides?
Gravel shoulder will be on the left side only now, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, all right, okay. And then for landscape plan, which, which kind of goes with what John and Nancy had mentioned as well, and Jim, that would be to be determined once we figure this stuff out. But we're trying to meet the regulation on the road, trying to make it safe for the fire department as well. And yes, the grade is what it is, but we're not supposed to make it worse. So Pete, from an engineering standpoint, and John, does this sound very reasonable and doable, shifting over to the left, making it less of an eyesore? And we're still going to have it at the peak height, we got a six-foot piece up there, and I'm not sure what to do with that, other than plantings to kind of hide some of this stuff.
Yeah, shrubbery.
Yeah. Or small, small six-foot pines or something like that, they suck a lot of water and
Let me ask you that question then. Nancy, if, if we have to say have a six-foot wall, regardless of how it is, that's the ultimate, but it's the bottom line, are you okay if they put in shrubbery somehow to disguise that, to look more of a backdrop as opposed to looking at a guardrail?
Aesthetically, that would be a plus, but my access will be, as I understand it, on Park Street. I will have no longer have any access on Benjamin Street past my garage.
No, that's not true, Nancy.
No, that's not true Nancy. He's, he's, Bill Holt has added another access behind your garage, between the back of your garage and the end of the concrete block wall, there's another access in there.
So that would be off of Park Street?
No, off of
Benjamin.
Off of Benjamin.
Oh, okay.
So you'll have two accesses, gravel up to your, up to your property line, you'll have two accessways to your driveway aprons to your property.
Okay. Another thing is the picture that's on the screen now that Rebecca has up there, you can see those trees leaning over the road. You can see how close they undercut the roots on those trees.
Rebecca, can you go to the next one or two pictures, wherever it is? There's one that'll directly show that spot there.
For some reason, they're not loading, I can only get to the first photo.
Well Nancy, what would you like to do with those trees?
Well, Steve had said he'd take them down.
Okay.
I just wanted to have that on record that those two will come down, because otherwise they're gonna end up on the front lawn of the, of the new house he built across the way.
Then that's an easy fix.
And in this picture, you can see the buffer between my yard and the road was anywhere between a foot to three feet high. You can see at the entrance to my driveway, it's now lower than the road.
So we got a buffer zone to put up for trees, is that where we're getting at?
Well, at least raise it back up to where it was, I mean, you can see down towards the garage, you can see my choke cherry bushes. Those were all ripped out, whatever, you know, I mean, but that was a little bit of a privacy type thing for me, but they're gone, so it, so be it. At the height of
They can replace those, Nancy, that's not an issue. That's easy.
The height of the buffer, yeah. You can, well, you really can't tell in this picture, but it's much less here towards Bell Street than it is further down where the trees are leaning. It was all one level. And now it, as I say, now it's flattened down, so it's actually below my, you know, below the driveway.
So how do you address that, Bill?
There's gonna be a curb along the edge of the pavement, and all the pavement from the edge of Bell and Benjamin now is sloping down towards Benjamin, down, down toward the hill. That runoff is gonna, gonna be caught by the curb and go down Benjamin, to those Benjamin Street improvements, down to the drainage that we're collecting and putting into the detention pond, so it's not gonna go towards Mrs. Sweet's property. As far as the grade goes, yeah, I think, you know, you can see the, I assume that stake is a lot corner. So the land to the left of the stake is part of the right of way, which, you know, we're allowed to work on, to grading to make this roadway work. So, I mean, I'm sure Steve will reseed it and plant it and you can talk to him about shrubs or whatever, you know.
Right, those trees far
I can't speak with the Hulus, but I'm sure they would pipe in in a second if they have any objection to doing that.
Right.
Well, my
About removing the tree that's leaning?
Just two there.
Yeah, okay, the one right behind it too, yeah, Steve said he would remove those for you.
That's an easy fix.
Those are actually in the right of way, but they should be removed from the looks of them.
Well, they will be removed as soon as we're able to do more work on the road.
Yeah, if it's within the right of way, this yeah, I'm sure Highway will need to help you with that, or at least give you some more direction on it, because they technically own it. If it's in the right of way.
When they widen the road, they undercut the roots.
Oh yeah, I see it, yeah. No doubt, so that's, that is gotta be addressed, no problem there, because that, that is gonna go. The buffer zone to give a little privacy is something we put in all subdivisions, it's it's part of the reg in there, and sometimes and it's hard to see this right now, we can get a landscape plan and Bill can draw something up and Pete can review it and John and but the best thing to do is, is to put the language in that we, if it's not sufficient, that, you know, sometimes you have to add a tree or two in certain areas to complete a buffer zone and put it back to a little bit more privacy, and you really won't know that to the end, because you don't wanna put a stake in the ground and then that, a tree ends up there, but it's not really doing what it's supposed to be doing. So I think we need to add some language in there and see some kind of landscape plan. Bill, did you already draft one up, or?
I have not, nope, this is the first I've heard of landscaping on this side of the roadway. You don't always landscape along the right of way, so it's usually street trees.
Well, that's what I mean, that's kind of what I'm talking about. You know, the buffer trees that we always put in, the cyclical pines, white pines, hemlocks, that kind of stuff.
Well, I did, I did show them on the left hand side. Honestly, we could put one on the right hand side here. They're, I think on the regulation, it's either forty or fifty foot on center, so we could put one here and I don't know if we need a second one, because there's already trees there.
Is, is this, we should talk about the trees, is this the side, is that stake, is that what I'm looking at for the for the encroachment area, is that?
I believe the tall stake is the, is the property corner. You see the cone, and you see the left end of the cone, you see a stake that represents the edge of the pavement on the left hand side.
This is the smaller of the two encroachments.
Alright, okay, so
Four inches.
Alright, wow, alright, so we gotta dress the place up a little bit here. Okay, and then, and then the other encroachment area, since we're talking about encroachments, what's the plan for that?
Well, the plan is to remove the soil that was filled over the top of the, I assume he didn't take out the top, so I assume he filled over the top, so he might have. In which case, we'd bring it down to the existing grade that matches it and then re-lome it and replant it with vegetation. I can tell you right now, what was growing down there before was Japanese knotweed, which is an invasive species, you don't really wanna replant that, so we would probably do some kind of a wild seed mixture that would be more receptive. Or we could use grass, if that's what you'd like.
So the encroachment areas will be restored with some type of landscape plan, whether it be seed, wild seed, shade trees, street trees, hemlocks, whatever you guys are gonna
And if that's along, if that's along the wall, and I don't know if the Duhulus would agree to the hedge, but that, that's what she'd like, I mean, I'm sure that they can speak. And if that's what they wanna plant, then they can propose that, if they'd rather just plant other shrubs or other type of plantings, we can, we'll propose that, but I think we'd like to see Mrs. Sweet so happy about the wall, so I think we would propose something that would be more of a shield to it.
Yeah, are you understanding all this, Nancy?
I'm sorry?
Are you understanding what we're talking about?
Yes, it's just the, the, again, I'm back to where the cone is in this picture. It's probably only four inches above the road there. Originally, it was over a foot high, you know, higher, as, as, as the buffer. And that's, I was just wondering if that's gonna be returned to the height it was originally.
Bill?
Well, and this right that you're seeing right now is not the final grade, this is the gravel grade. It's gonna be, I haven't checked that to see if it's compliant with my design. I will obviously be checking that and grading it for them. It may be coming up. If it's not, if it's at some grade, it's gonna be four and a half inches of pavement higher than that, and then we have to have the curb, it's gonna be six inches higher, so that's nine and a half inches. And I'm sure we'll put it along behind the curb, so by the time we're done regrading that that five foot section between the stake to the left and the cone and the stake to the right, it'll be higher than what it is right now. It'll be reseeded, re-loomed, and then plantings, you know, a tree planted there as well. So I think in the end, it will be the same grade that it was, or very close to it.
Okay.
And then, I don't know if I'm, okay, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I'll let you speak for us then.
I'm just addressing the back driveway to the bottom of my garage. If you are going up that much higher on the road and then putting a curb in on top of that, my driveway into the back is pretty low. How am I gonna be able to access it?
We actually, that grade right now on the right hand side by your driveway is too high. That I do know, I checked it, because I wanted to make sure my new grading would work. So for some reason, beyond station one twenty-five, the contractor, the whole road right now is two feet too high.
Yes, remember, you're talking to a layperson who doesn't know what stations are or anything, so work with me there, Bill.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so, right before your driveway to your garage, and right before the driveway to number thirty-four, the grades are pretty, pretty reasonably close to what they're supposed to be. They're gonna be changed slightly, and they're gonna be lowered on your side. On, when you go past that, your driveway, and he goes down the slope, down to the bottom, the contractor put in about two, two and a half feet too much soil, so it's already too high, it's gonna be coming down, so that's why it looks five feet high right now. It's gonna be coming down to about three and a half feet high, and maybe even a little less if we push the road to the left a little more. So what's there now is not what's gonna be there when it's done.
Bottom line, the MT, they're gonna tear it up, they're gonna take away two feet of soil, so it'll be leveled off at the end.
Okay, and the only thing is, last year, I came to the meetings and I was very diligent in saying that I had no access to the bottom of the garage. Well, we're there again this year.
We solved that issue saying you didn't have two accesses.
When they tore out, when they tore out the temporary road, they left a ridge in front of the driveway to the back of the garage. It is about eight feet, eight feet, eight inches high. Now, I could go out there and rake it and shovel it, but at sixty-seven, I don't feel I can anymore.
No, they will fix that, once this is resolved, that's all it is. They gotta cease and desist, they cannot work on it. Once it's done, it's gonna be so you can get into it, that's all it is. They cannot touch this property until we resolve this issue.
Yeah, we're gonna correct the grade and we're gonna provide a paved apron to the property line, so that it'll have a good transition from the new pavement to your, to your gravel drive.
Okay, as I say, I spent all last season without having access down there, and I don't have access to it now. I understand you're under a cease and desist order, but when would this be rectified? I mean, I have mulch, I have lawn furniture down there. I mean, I could wheelbarrow it up the hill, but I'm getting kind of old for that, you know?
Maybe, maybe I could get out there socially distanced soon, Nancy, and take a look at that with you. Cause I'm having a hard time visualizing exactly where you're referring to.
The driveway that goes into the rear, I have two levels on the garage, and it's the rear driveway to the bottom of the garage.
About, about twenty feet beyond the back of the garage is where the driveway went in before. And it's mostly grass at this point. But it is, there's a cut in the road there, so that, yes, there's a lift going up into her driveway right now. If the developer, if the board gives permission to go out there, they can just rake that out themselves, which would give her access now, even if the board doesn't wanna let anything else happen under the cease and desist, they could go out there and rake that out, have somebody go out there and probably take them twenty minutes or a half an hour. With a york rake or with a, just a hand rake? Just a hand rake.
Hand rake, york rake, whatever, just let them do it and make her happy.
It's just so that she can get a wheelbarrow in and out of there, or walk in and out of there easily.
Exactly, whatever, or drive her car down, that's fine.
That's, that's the thing, I'm getting too old for the wheelbarrow, I need to drive my car down there.
Alright, so, so that's something to be addressed on that, okay. So Pete, I liked your idea to get out there and and just kind of tune things up. You've got some comments, Bill's got a plan to kind of tweak a little bit. Can we get all this stuff done by June second?
I believe I can get, I believe I can get the plan prepared, hopefully no later than Monday, so Peter could have it probably on Tuesday, since Monday's a holiday. I don't know if he can review it before the second, but I think I can get the plan done before then.
Bill, is your, is your intent to come in with the ten percent max slope?
Yeah, I'm gonna attempt that, I'm thinking that we may need to go to twelve percent for a short section, but I'd like to try to get the ten percent, just because it would help the Duhulus on the fire protection part of the issue.
Well, it meets the reg is the, is the key.
Well, we already proved twelve percent slope part of it already, so.
Yeah, but it wasn't that long, it was a short piece.
That's what I'm saying, I would come back with a shorter piece.
And me set what we read.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, so let's, so, so let's plan on, and meanwhile, can we get a hand crew in there, or a crew with hand tools and get that berm out of there for Nancy?
Deana?
Yes.
Can you do that?
Is that okay with you?
Actually, if Peter is gonna go out there and meet with Nancy, I would really like Steve to be able to meet with them too, so everybody knows what's gonna make everyone happy.
Absolutely.
That would be awesome.
That's all we're looking for.
Alright, so that's two different, two different things though.
We've just been waiting for this meeting, so hopefully somebody can tell us we can get in there and do something.
Alright, so, so we got two different things, we've got we've got a crew that's gotta go in with some hand tools, if the board approves it, to rake that berm out of there, so she can have access. That's, that's step one. The second step is the meeting between whoever wants to go. Okay, between Pete, John, Nancy, and the Hulus, and Bill. Okay, so, is the board okay with allowing that berm to get removed, to get access back to Nancy, to her property with, you know, a couple of guys and hand iron rakes, is that?
Yeah, I think we're alright with that, Wally.
Yeah.
Alright, so we need a vote to allow just that, to allow access for Nancy, so it's a, if it's just an eight inch berm, they can rake it down like John said. So, somebody wanna fly that motion?
Yeah, I'll motion.
Okay, in a second?
I'll make a motion for them to go down and rake out that, that berm by hand.
I'll second it.
Alright, all favor say Valley?
Aye.
Okay, so there's the access, berm only, hand tools, no other work. And then as far as the meeting goes, your three parties can, or four parties, get together with a date with Pete, and then I need a motion to continue to June second, and hopefully we'll have everything wrapped.
Well, well, before we, before we close, continue the hearing tonight, I just wanna throw one thing out there, I don't know if Mary would be receptive to it, but I know she doesn't like the wall, so I was just wondering if she would consider allowing the Duhulus to have permission to regrade onto her property and make it so that she can come right off Benjamin, on that whole, that whole length of road, where the wall's gonna go, and then they could, she could have access right off of Benjamin as well, the whole way. If that would be something that should be receptive to, we could work out a plan, show it to Peter and to John Paulson and see if, you know, they can give her some guidance as to whether that's a good idea for her or not. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, because I think that might be another solution other than the wall.
So why don't you guys, I mean, that's still in the planning stage, so as far as that goes, I mean, the board will entertain whatever you, whatever you pitch in, I think it's a great idea to get all the options on the table with the parties there.
Great compromise.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, that would work out, so Nancy, John, and Pete, you you think the guys can square that away? Yeah, we can definitely talk about it when we meet out there.
Yeah, I can do that, and if, if she is receptive and Yeah, I can do that, and, um, if, if she is receptive and, and John is gonna meet us out there, I mean. If he can speak for her or if she's gonna be there as well, that'd be great, and we can talk about it then.
I'd like to be there.
Yeah, I, I think that's, so before you go crazy with, uh, you know, redesign the plan based on the comments, come up with a, a common plan. And, uh, and if you can get it done by the second, I, I, I mean, we're all here to, uh, to get all the issues resolved, I think that's a really good idea, get all the parties involved and then. Pitch it back to the board and if everybody's in agreement, meets the reg, then, then voila, we're, we're there, so, uh.
Nice point, Bob, uh, William, thank you.
So, uh, so, okay, so, so now we need a motion to fly to, uh, to continue the hearing to June second.
So motion. Yep, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the hearing continued to June second, thank you all.
Thank you, I'll be in touch with, uh, Peter and, and John and see if we can get together with the, the hulus and, uh, Mrs. Sweetser.
Right.
There being an opportunity for a public comment just in regards to the continuation?
Go ahead.
So I, I, my question about it being a public road, um, living in the neighborhood, it looks like, you know, the trash trucks aren't going down there, it hasn't. It hasn't been a road to plow yet, so the, the town's not maintaining it as a public road, right?
I always thought that was, when did that become a public road, who knows the, uh? Anybody know the date on that?
Benjamin Street is, uh, there's a little bit of a cloudy, um, way of whether or not it's been accepted. In nineteen ninety-five, there was an article that accepted it, uh, but it never really gave the delineation as to what length it was accepted. I, I do know that it, it, it's a little, it's not clear. So it, it's partially accepted up until a certain point, and then I believe the highway superintendent was under the impression that it would definitely, uh, remain a private road. As to where we're talking further down on Benjamin Street Extension and then further down Park Street, which we're hoping can be renamed Benjamin Street Extension on the plan as well. So that we can get an endorsed plan with the adequate street names, but, um, the answer is not clear.
Alright, so we got, that's, that brings up a different issue, if it's a private way, all parties own to the middle.
And I do know that the, um, highway superintendent is on the call this evening as well, uh, Rennie Carroll, so if the board has any specific questions for him as well.
Yeah, hey Ray, um, welcome to the meeting. What's your understanding of this, or what would you like to see, but on a private way, as you know, but parties own to the middle, which is, which is interesting. And then, uh, also to get your blessing on those trees that are hanging over the roadway to come out of there. What would you like to see, a petition to the town to accept the road the entire way?
I, I don't believe that, we talked about the road, I think initially the road was gonna be a private way. That's how it's been proposed. So I believe that was, that hasn't really been discussed. As far as I know.
Rennie, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think he's talking about where Benjamin Street is up on the top and how there's been some back and forth as to whether or not that portion was accepted. Benjamin Street Extension where it loop up to the Y and down to Park is understandably going to be private, but that portion that connects to the Benjamin Street Extension is the topic that they're discussing this evening.
What, why would that be a private way at this point for an, an extension of an existing? Town-accepted road from a hundred years ago and so, I think, right?
I think the hulus would like to have it accepted as a, and I think Mrs. Sweetser was also, um, indicating that she would prefer it to be a public way as well. Um, I don't wanna speak for her, but I think at one of the meetings she did mention that she would rather see it become a public way. And we're really only talking about the two extensions, yes, I think it's public down to Park Street and then from Park Street, we extended Benjamin and we.
What were you looking at, eight hundred feet?
Uh, no, no, it's, uh, from Bell Street to Park Street, it's two hundred and then another eighty feet in each direction.
That's not much, so why, why aren't the trash trucks going down now, because that's, that's a portion of the, of the public way?
Because it was unimproved.
It's unconstructed, it's not constructed.
It was a public way, unconstructed.
You're talking down by the, where, where the new house is, okay.
And now if we build it, it may be able to be, it's, it's, it may be able to be driven once we build it and we do the, the two, uh, as we build the two, uh, extensions and have a turnaround, they should be able to go down there and turn around. And probably no reason why it shouldn't be accepted as a public way.
It was my understanding that as, as proposed, I believe it was a one lot subdivision. Under the subdivision bylaw, there were certain waivers requested, it not serving, you know, a larger subdivision, only serving one home, so that, that may be the rub. And I guess my question's only coming from a perspective of, you know, if there's a retaining wall there. And some curbing that's gonna protect some storm runoff from Nancy's property and she may be concerned with the runoff at some point. If that's maintained as a private way, does that mean that the future homeowner is then responsible for maintaining that retaining wall and? You know, how is that gonna be cleared and then Nancy's, you know, she's depending on a private homeowner to protect her property, which.
Well, that's, that's, if you missed that previous discussion, that's, that's kinda where that's going, but let's, since we have the highway on. What do you wanna see on that and what would you, um, need outside what the plan shows? To support, uh, that being brought into a town, a town-accepted way?
It's, it's my belief, the, the twelve percent, um, that part of the roadway. To have emergency access, I know that the fire, um, you know, fire department may have signed off on it, but to, to plow and maintain these roads at twelve percent. And, and it seems like in Groveland that people built houses, like, there must have been goats going up some of these hills because. They're like, you can't even drive a pickup truck up there, never mind one-ton truck with a plow and a salter on there. It's, i- 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 it's egregious to think that you can, you can maintain these roads with any safe. You know, distance for the, for the occupants of the vehicle and, and it, it just becomes really taxing on us. You know, not just the highway department, but the fire department, the police, the ambulance, you know, in the middle of a snowstorm, if an emergency, a fire or something happens to get to these homes. It's, it's tough, it, it becomes very tough and, and it just seems like it was very accepted back in the day and we have these regulations in place. And if we keep amending it and, and, and letting, you know, these roads be constructed improperly, where we're only, you know, indebted ourselves to, to further hinder us, our ability to, to maintain these streets and roads. So I just, I think that, you know, amendments for, you know, a twelve percent grade for a certain period is, is one thing, but if there's other, you know, there certainly can be, I think in this instance. Other ways to overcome that twelve percent grade. At least, you know, I've been on that site probably three or four times myself. Um, and being in construction, uh, over twenty-five years, I think, you know, we could certainly look into. You know, if Nancy was up to it, you know, using some native materials to, to grade off her property a little bit and, and avoiding a lot of, um, grade changes on her property. Maybe not having to look at the wall of China as much, maybe we can, you know, use some native soils to, to alleviate that, maybe we, we don't have to build a, a six and a half foot. Wall or whatever, a three and a half foot wall with a, with a thirty-inch godrail, that's gonna hinder her, um, you know, view of, you know, what she used to have somewhat of a view, I'm guessing of Johnson's Pond is now gonna be.
I, I read your letter and, um. She, that. She doesn't even, um, Johnson Pond doesn't even come into play with her, her, uh, house because she's looking straight out back and this is off out of the Johnson's Pond, that's all, that's all I got to say when I, I mean. I agreed with you the letter, but I didn't agree with, uh, what you said about, um, blocking her view to Johnson's Pond.
Well, even to just the woods, I mean, it'd be, you know, you go trees, wa, you know, if you go from a nice backyard with trees to, you know, looking at a wall that is potentially, seems to be growing if we change the, 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 the nature of the road and the, the wall grows from three feet to almost four feet and then you put a thirty-inch rail.
I'm just saying, um, I mean, look, look at that now down there with that old building and everything else that we can't do anything with, so.
Yeah, no, I know.
Alright, well, wait, wait a minute, that's, that's up for the homeowners there, Bob, so, but Ray, I, I, I agree with, with what you're saying on the, on the roads and that, that is a, that is a problem, but. If you didn't know, because you, you might be new in the position, but when these, I, I forget the section number, it might be section three, four, five, actually. When the, when the preliminary plans, uh, are presented to the board, they go out to every board and every commissioner. And in the subreg book, every single board has a list of things that they can comment on, the, the board of selectmen actually have the largest control, I think, if my memory serves you right. Where they can, you know, request, uh, you know, they're gonna need schools, they're gonna need fire protection, they're gonna need whatever, but those comments come back. And so, and yours are really imperative that we get those back for conditions just like this, so. If, if you haven't seen that section, we can get that to you, but I, I think you, you have a, a good point and a lot of muscle on, on how the roads are constructed, because you're an inheritor. And if we're not building them right, which is one of the things that we did when we changed the, uh, the width of the road, the gravel base, the subbase, the drains, subdrains and all of that before. You know, we found that the roads weren't lasting thirty years in town and we couldn't figure out why, and then we started looking at how they were constructed and we redesigned all of that based upon. You know, two previous road commissioners' input, so, so your input is warranted, necessary and of course welcome. So if we can come up with a fix with this, but you've gotta be comfortable and the board's gotta be comfortable, so when, and I would love to see this thing. Get into, uh, protected under the town and accepted because then the town, you know, it's not a big street, but we do get a little bit of funding from the state from that, it used to be called chapter ninety money, I don't know if it still is. And, uh, but to get that in, and if we have to tweak the road to meet your requirements or your specs and comfort zone and build a better street, then I think we should do it. But we're gonna need your input as to what you want, because this is one of those old paper street roads that just kinda kept going there for a hundred years and here we are. So, but all the, obviously, because it's a private way, and Nancy, I don't know if you knew this, but. You own to the middle of that road with that private way as if you border that. So all parties have to agree and then you would surrender that right in the fee of the land in the roadway. Stevenson's Way was another example that we did this on. And they went in and fixed it, highway commissioner accepted it and now it's an accepted way. So, so it's gonna take a lot of teamwork to do that, but I don't think it's too crazy. And it would help with all these other services and, uh, Ray, you would get a, a road that you could, uh, somehow kinda plow. And, and I clearly understand what you're talking about with these hills, um, the way they commit, so.
Correct, correct, no, I'm, I'm with you, I, I, I'm wondering if the, the width of that road originally, um, is changed in the new plans, because I know it's really tight when you come in the accepted section of Benjamin to Belly. It's a really tight road there, I don't, I don't know if the width changed from where the, um, Benjamin Extension is going to where Benjamin Road, the Accepted was. Cause that comes into play with, uh, with the, an accepted road as far as chapter ninety-two.
It, it, it hasn't changed from what we proposed, it's still twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so let's get you in there with that, with, with all of that fixed stuff, Rebecca, procedural question for you. We, we had a lot of discussion post-closing of the hearing, continuing the hearing. Can that be accepted into, all the comment will be on the record, but can we just make sure that gets added and do you want another vote to, to continue?
Um, I've added the additional comment to the minutes and it will be reflected in the minutes. And I would agree that we should make another motion to continue the public hearing until June second.
Okay, so, so, uh, for those of you that didn't follow that, we had a lot of comment that was necessary, that should be part of the record for a hearing. So we can go ahead, to include that into the hearing, we have to vote another, make another motion to continue the hearing to June second, so it's part of the, the record. So somebody wanna fly that?
Can I just make a comment? Can I just get some clarification on the Benjamin Street being public versus Benjamin Street Extension being private? It seems as if everybody still is confused about this. It's my understanding that Benjamin Street is being improved through this subdivision, down to where Benjamin Street Extension is being built, is that correct?
I can clarify that the chapter ninety funding and what the state has approved for Benjamin Street. Only was accepted to the portion while it was paved, when it was paved prior to any projects taking place to thirty-two Benjamin Street. So if you measure the length of Benjamin Street to where thirty-two Benjamin Street is, that is accepted under the state and what the town essentially has Benjamin. However, Benjamin Street per the plan in the roadway that created the road actually extended and then came down off of Park Street. So there was a little bit of an indiscrepancy in the warrant article as to what was the accepted roadway, because the warrant article never expressed the length of the roadway, it was always just assumed that it was. So there's that issue, but then when you extended Benjamin Street out into the Y format and then Park Street being a paper street, never having been constructed, both of those technically are private roadways. So there's only one issue of cloudiness when it comes to the Benjamin Street portion, because it was never actually constructed and or paved. And the state only has it accepted up until that portion of where thirty-two Benjamin Street is located.
Right, because it wasn't improved, which is why it wasn't paved. Well, now, our subdivision plan, um, stated that we're going to improve the public way of Benjamin Street. And build the private extension of Benjamin and Park, which is now renamed as Benjamin Street Extension. That's my total understanding and I'm just still confused with the fact that, um, that's not confirmed.
Cause it's not built yet and then you have to turn it over for acceptance, so it's only, so the street is only accepted to the paved area.
Right, but it's going, so it's going to be improved, it's still the same road, it hadn't, doesn't have pavement on it, but it shows as a public road. And now it's going to be improved as a continuation of the public road that has been approved and accepted.
So are you familiar, or do you remember what you had to do on the subdivision you did off King Street just recently to get that accepted to the town? By turning over the, in the land and the dimensions and, and the public article?
Yeah, that was a new road that we built, we talked about.
Kinda where you're going with that, so from the, wherever that pavement ended is where the, uh, the improvement shall start.
But actually, but actually the right-of-way is the public right-of-way, the roadway was not, not built, but the, the right-of-way is public. So it's not owned to the middle of the road by either a party on either side. Park Street was not approved, not accepted, so therefore, therefore Park Street is a private way and our extension is private. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking like, like Deana, the hulus thinking is that Benjamin Street down to Park is actually a public way. It's an improved public way, but it's still a public way, we're improving that for the town and then we're continuing on and doing a private extension in both Park and the Benjamin Street Extension. So I think it's, it's sort of a, it's a mix, it's partly public and partly private. Have to do the process.
But you still have to, in, like, like I said, when it, somewhere in the town meeting, hopefully, of eighteen whatever, okay? It gave a description or at least a length, and that's probably what Rebecca's referencing, uh, someone picked up that length of a road. Now, it's an easy fix in the, in the long run, because the work is the same. The thing is, is that the article's gotta be written to accept all of it and, and then therefore in the private way section, uh, the parties lose the fee. In the land from the middle and it goes back to the total right-of-way. And we've done this several times in town with the, with the old streets and I referenced Stevenson's Way because that was a, a, a pretty well-known one. And that's how that was done, so, so Ray, we got a little bit of homework to do on, on the history of Benjamin Street, anybody, historians wanna, wanna take a crack at that? But just to square it all away, we'll, we'll, we'll do the right thing. But just to square it all away, we'll do, we'll, we'll do the right thing at town meeting. Uh, we'll just get it all squared away and Dina, thanks for bringing that up. And then we we just got a little bit of research to do, but either way, Ray's gonna be happy with the with the plan and all the parties still have to meet. And uh, and come up with a solution and and a better plan and then everybody's on board, so no one's gonna object to it when it goes for acceptance.
Well, we've done a lot of research on this over the years, I mean, I can, I can ask my attorney Phil Perry to attend the next meeting, if you think it will help. Been looking into this for a long time, had several um talks and meetings with Rebecca regarding this, that's why honestly, I thought everybody. I thought it was the understanding.
This is actually a book?
Was a public road down to where we're extending it and we're just improving it.
In the, in the clerk's office. Was a book, yes, of the town except, e- every street has a date on it. When it was accepted.
It was accepted in the length that Rebecca's referring to, what I, from what I understand, is the length that was paved.
Okay, but we're talking two different, two different animals and to be clarified, but Benjamin Street. The date that that was accepted as a public way, and and there's two dates that come to mind and I think. Uh, all you engineers may may remember this, or Ray, is that certain, when the zoning act came out back in the forties. There were certain things that triggered post that and houses. On right of ways that if they weren't accepted by a certain date. That was a catch-all date that things were accepted and I'm and I'm not sure when that year was, but it was a long time ago. So, um, but Benjamin Street may have been accepted by the town. Way back uh at the turn of the century and and not two thousand, the nineteen hundreds. But some someone has a date on that in the town clerk's office, there should be a book of when that way was accepted. Uh, so that gives us a starting point and that's what we gotta look at and then. And if we just have to write an article to clear up the confusion and the fog, uh, that's what we do, that's all. It's it's not a big deal, we did it for Stevenson's Way, we did it for others too.
Wally, I think that what Rebecca was saying was that it was accepted to the length. For which it was paved at the time, which looks like was probably at the intersection of Bell. Beyond that, it remained a private way.
That's right, so now.
Letters having fifty percent ownership in that private way, so that would have made from Bell down to. Park. A private way that had nothing to do with the rest of Benjamin Street.
Now has to maintain a private way.
Right, if it stays private.
Right, so so what what I was saying is pick up from the pavement. Once this is done and we clarify that for all residents that are out there and for the town itself too. And clean up that issue so that the whole thing is accepted, provided it meets all the the little check marks. Uh, on that and with with Ray, Ray putting his input, us and all the parties concerned to make that happen because it. It doesn't make any sense to have half a street public and half a street private. Let's get it all done at the same time and we'll clear the title on it and the fee and the land and. You know, and accept the width the way that it is to make it happen.
About it is is that there are streets that are half public and half private.
There are. In in our town, most of them are either private and there's a few of them. Savory Lane is one of them, there's another one uh off of Seven Star Road and, but we always left the door open to that. That, and we don't do that anymore, but but at the time we did. And if the residents at the town that at the time, at any time, like tomorrow. Want to have that town, that road accepted by the town, they have to bring it up to the standard. Of the regulation in place at the time, so today's reg would run in if Savory wanted to do it, they would bring the road up, petition to the town, the town would accept. Okay, because a lot of them did have issues and we did away with that for the same, this reason, because it gets really confusing. And people are paying taxes and it gets into the roadwork and it it was a good concept, it didn't work.
But this is a little bit different than that. Because. From Bell down to the end is private, then anything that's being proposed to be built. Has to have a sign-off by the butter or butters that own the other half of that right of way. And I don't know that Nancy's ever done that with any of the proposals that have been out here with the original plan that was proposed and accepted. Signed off by the town, there probably should have been a sign-off by Nancy saying she was okay with that. Uh, I don't know that that ever happened. All be corrected.
I think both parties have a right to use the entire right of way.
That you don't have the right to build it without their permission.
I I disagree. I I believe you do.
I think there is case law to support that you do have the right to improve um a way that exists. On a paper street to be a a point of that, so I believe there is case law to support. To improve the way, um, to uh disallow access is a different issue, but. Definitely, I think like, I think I forget the case law, but if you, there was a gentleman wanted to bring utilities and he was able to do so based upon the fact that. You you own to the center and it wasn't impeding anyone's access, so I do know that there is case law to support. That she wouldn't necessarily need to sign off on anything that would not impede her ability to access her property from that roadway.
And and I think Rebecca is correct because we ran, and so was John, uh, actually for two different points. One, to improve the right of way on Stevenson's Way, okay, that we ended up doing it, uh, the town. And then at the end, when it went to acceptance because it had been existed as a private way. All parties surrendered their fee in the right of way. Back to the lot lines once, once it was accepted by town meeting, so so I. But anyway, I think we're, I think we're getting into some really good schooling tonight. On on uh, these lands and I'm glad we're having the discussion and that we're able to hold our own.
You definitely need sign-offs from all parties to have it accepted as a public way, you definitely need to have the right of way sign-off, definitely.
Right, yeah, yeah, and and we may get to that, so so it's something we can research later to fix it, but meanwhile. So so let's, let's move forward and I still need that second or motion and a second to continue the second to include all this. Into the, into the hearing. Somebody want to fly that?
I'll second it.
You gotta fly it first, Jim.
Go ahead, you do that.
All right.
I'm not privy to that information.
The motion, the motion is for the uh, to continue the hearing to to the second and to include the post-testimony. All right. And all in favor say aye? Aye, aye, okay, show the vote, show the hearing continued, thank all the parties. And uh, Bob, take it from there, do we have anything else?
Yeah, we got a couple other things going on, so, thank you, that's why I'm trying to move on, so. Getting late. Okay, continue um Grovan zoning. Reconve- reconfiguration of town meeting warrant article. To consider proposed amendment to Grovan zoning bylaw. The subject matter of the proposed amendment is a recodification of the zoning bylaw in. Non-substantial corrective amendment there too. Do I have a motion?
So I'll just try and be really brief with this one, um, we've talked about this before. This is to move forward with the E code three sixty platform, which is to help enhance the overhaul use and accessibility of the bylaw and subdivision rules and regulations. I'm gonna tackle both of them at the same time, you're kind of the same exact thing. Um, and we've worked with the company, uh, General Code and they have recodified the bylaw and the subdivision rules and regulations. And has also done a legal analysis for both of them and they identified some conflicts, some spelling errors and the need to update certain. State regulations that have been outdated, uh, and the email that I sent you with the agenda and all the other packet items. It showed you a change list of all of the um non-substantive changes that they've made, um, so essentially we would be. So for the zoning bylaw, uh, we as a planning board are required to have a public hearing and to make a recommendation. To town meeting to whether or not we want uh town meeting to um move forward and approve and accept these changes. And then from a subdivision rules and regulations standpoint, we don't need to have that accepted at town meeting, but we do need to have a public hearing. And once we accept them at a public hearing and are noticed at a public hearing, then we're able to make those changes. So for the zoning bylaw, if you've reviewed the documents and are okay, I need a motion to make a um. Uh, favorable recommendation to the um town meeting and to. Also uh have them adopt the recommendations at town meeting. And then for the Grovan subdivision rules and regulations, it would be to um approve and adopt. The listed changes in the subdivision rules and regulations, so it would be for the recodification and then also the minor non-substantial changes.
When, when's the uh recommendation have to be in for town meeting, isn't that for like, it can be in. As you don't want it to slate, but it can be at latest, as late of the town meeting?
No, you're gonna have it.
It can be before the town meeting, obviously, not recommended, uh, the town meeting is proposed to be on June eighth. I know that the Board of Selectmen are trying to make um uh accommodations in terms of. This with social distancing and all, um, so I would prefer to have a recommendation into them sooner or later, but our meeting, next meeting is June second. So we could um continue these both until June second and then have a recommendation by June third to be on. Warrant, but then it would be in the books and then we, somebody would have to make a amendment on the floor, um, so I was just trying to make it clean and easy.
I I I make, I make a motion to um, these two amendments right now. As as they stand.
Is the motion open? Second, I just got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, what?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so on the, on the changes, because and uh, and I'll be up, I I've been out of. Uh, sorts on that, uh, looking at that particular uh modification on that, besides the the spelling. And um, the reconfiguration of of both manuals, the subdivision regs I get. On the zoning, what what else changed besides that, was there anything outrageous on that?
For the zoning, um, no, there wasn't anything that was um. Too much in terms of of what we were proposing to do, um, I'm just pulling it up right now so you can see real briefly. That it's just essential um, that was.
So we didn't have an article change, we just had a uh reconfiguration and.
So it's two things, the recodification, because then it changes the the numbering and the layout and format and then the other changes are are again, they're they're minor like. That you can see where the cursor is, it says and. Like, so we're not really talking about changes that are are substantive, like instead of saying lots fronting, we're saying four. Instead of saying curved and cul-de-sac, we're saying curved streets and cul-de-sac, so it's really kind of non-substantial like.
It's mo- it's mostly language. Clarification.
Yeah, okay, so it's clarification of of the article, not a new article, so, okay, so, okay.
More ca- clarification and spelling.
Yeah, so it's that one page, right? Is that in one page?
I think there's six pages, but that's. Be the copies. I'll scroll through.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm just scanning as we go home.
Like RB instead of R two.
Right, okay, yeah.
The purpose of CMR update. So the. For clarification in terms of the numbers, like if you go to twenty thousand or fifty thousand, but then fifty.
Question I have for Rebecca is the language changes. The dynamics of the law or whatever we're talking about today, if it doesn't, then semantics.
Yeah, all of the changes are non-substantive, so they would not. They would not affect anything that we're dealing with, again, it says like, instead of saying community affairs, we're saying housing and community development, so we're. Clarifying spelling errors, CMR updates, we're not adding or changing any of the regulations and or terminology or on, or even context.
All right, so it doesn't change the intent of the reg or the reg, it just clarifies.
Yes, it's more clarification and the right wording for from the state and everything else, that's all.
Yeah, I can see it here now, thank you for Rebecca for screening that up. Uh, so I can see on that, all right, so so that answers my question, the subdivision changes are ours anyway. And and so that doesn't have to go before town meeting, so, okay, and that's the end of the list right there?
Yeah, and and they're the same subdivision. It's just like striking out like, you know, two thirds, like it's the same exact thing, there's no contextual changes whatsoever.
Yeah, okay, I I understand what we're doing, we've had to do this a couple times when the, when the uh state regs have changed and. We use different language than they, when they changed all the language, genomenclature, we had to go back in and do it a couple times. So, so that's what we're doing on this, so, okay, so I'm okay with that and uh, and we got a second, so.
Get a second.
Wally, aye.
Brad, aye.
Jim?
Let's go, aye.
Bob, yes. Okay. Um, approve May fifth meet minutes. Do I have a motion? Second. Roll call.
Brad, aye.
Jim, aye.
Well, I, okay. Uh, approve outstanding invoice, we have one invoice from back in December. For two forty-five Center Street for T E C peer review for three ninety.
So motion.
Roll call.
Wally, aye. Brad, aye.
Jim, aye.
Well, I. Okay, guys, um, then we will close the planning board meeting. Will be adjourned at, let's see, nine fifty-two, wow, that was. Wow, guys.
Second.
All favorite?
Good night, everybody. Yeah, Wally, aye.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate you hanging in there.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay, good night.